Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in 10 minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in 5 minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in 2 minutes.
Okay, we'll do a 60-second warning. Everybody wants to try and find a seat. Okay, if everybody wants to get started, it's 4:01. So we will call the November 21st, 2023 Volusia County Council Meeting to order at 4:01. We're glad that you are here, just to give you some preliminary instructions of what we, how we get started. We will begin with an invocation. I'll, so in just a minute, I'll ask you to stand. If you would like to stand, please do, and then just remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. And today, for our invocation, we have Rabbi Paul Falk from Ariel Congregation in Orange City, I believe. Rabbi, would you please stand with me?
Aveino Hashemiah, my Father in Heaven. We come before you at this season, season of Thanksgiving, to thank you for all the blessings that you've poured down upon us. We thank you that we live in a country and enjoy the freedoms that we have. We thank you for living in a state with so many beautiful natural resources that are all around us. We thank you that we get to enjoy them on a daily basis. Help us never to take those things for granted and all the blessings you brought upon us. We thank you for those that are in front of us, that have stepped up into roles of stewardship and responsibility, to be able to stand up and lead and serve. We ask blessings of wisdom upon them, guidance and strength in regard to all those wonderful things that we have, that you continue to bless us as we go forth into all of our tomorrows. In your name, amen and amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just add to that, the invocation is open to any faith group in Volusia County. If your faith group would like to take part in that, just send an email to K, the letter K, green@volusia.org. This is Carissa Green over here to my left, and she will get you set up. Carissa Green, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
May I have a moment? I'd like to move, Mr. Chairman, that we waive the rules and consider allowing our city, excuse me, county attorney to give us an update on the results of the special session as it pertains to Senate Bill 250 ahead of time.
Okay, I think that's an excellent idea.
Chairman, if that's a formal motion, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion that actually will be to suspend the rules.
Yes.
To allow us to take up the results of the amended Senate Bill 250, how that applies to Volusia County. We have a motion by David Santiago, a second by Troy Kent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Before we begin, we have one other point of business. As you can, as everybody looks up here, we have two members missing. One of those is the vice chair. And so I would like to take a nomination for one of you four men up here to be vice chair.
I'm going for Matt Reinhart.
Second, Johansson.
That'll be just for this meeting. So Matt, you've been nominated, Jake seconded nomination. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Chairman, I just wanted to congratulate the vice chair on that.
How's it feel so far?
Am I belated?
Yeah, okay. And Mr. Santiago, if we could, because I don't...
I'm just ready to take the roll before you guys move on.
And then you have some stacks?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Robbins, Mr. Santiago, Mr. Dempsey, Mr. Johansson, Mr. Kent, Mr. Reinhart, Mr. Brower, and both of those previous motions were five to zero with Mr. Dempsey and Mr. Robbins absent.
That's correct. Mr. Santiago, if it's in lieu of the rule suspension that you just were successful in passing, I think that's appropriate. We have a lot of people in the audience. We have people that are not here for the Senate Bill 250. I would like, if it pleases the council, to let those people participate in public presentation, and then we'll halt at that point, get recommendations from our county attorney on what that means to Volusia County, that we have this amended bill now, and then we can address that right afterwards. And then all those other people don't have to stay here for the whole meeting if they don't care to.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
I think whatever happens after the Senate Bill 250 update, we can handle accordingly. If anything happens.
Then, yeah, then the rule suspension expires anyway after that, so.
Yeah, just so I'm clear for staff, my understanding is what you'll do is, if there's any public input on any motion you would make during that report, you would call people up rather than let us rely on the regular public input.
Rather than having everybody come up and speak twice, that would get it all taken care of in one issue.
Sounds good.
So do you have some?
Okay, so you would like an update?
Yeah, so we'll hear from Mr. Dyer now, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
That was, that was the intent of the motion, just on suspension.
Okay.
And then if you make any motion on anything by sunshine law, you'd have to allow public input, so I think those cards you just received could speak.
Yes. Well...
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, and members of council. The, as we talked about at our last meeting, during the special session of the legislature, which it ended last week, it was just for last week, they did take up an amendment to what is known as Senate Bill 250 from the 2023 legislative session. And the way that was originally adopted, it operated to prohibit counties that were a certain distance, Volusia County being one of them, from amending their land development regulations to be more burdensome or restrictive because of their proximity to the landfall of Hurricane Nicole. So we talked about at the last meeting that legislature was proposing some changes to that. Those changes did pass, and the governor has signed them. In effect, the east coast of Florida would no longer be subject to Senate Bill 250. The west, named counties on the west coast, it was extended an additional two years. So it was consistent, I think, with what we talked about at the last meeting. So those changes took effect when the governor signed them on November 13th. So since Volusia County is no longer subject to Senate Bill 250, the county can consider the possibility of other options. The allowable uses within the county's heavy industrial I-2 zoning district provides that identifies a number of uses, but also includes any industrial use or structure, provided meets a minimum environmental standards, and is not a permitted special exception in this classification, and they're allowed by right. So if, to do a study, if that is what council wishes of the I-2 district, it's going to take some time to look at the possibility of recommended changes to I-2, to bring back to you as a report for you to make some decisions. Some heavy industrial uses are preempted by state law, and would need to be accounted for in that process. So typically, when a local government wants to have time to do that, they enact something in the form of what's called a moratorium, which in this case, based on conversations council had in the past, you could have a moratorium in the I-2 zoning district to allow for a necessary time for comprehensive examination. That could be anywhere between typically, when you see moratorium, six to 12 months. And the reason why you don't see generally beyond 12 months, and at least in Florida, it's a temporary impact, but under the Burt and Harris Act, a moratorium for less than a year is generally not considered an inordinate burden, which is the language that that statute uses to trigger liability. It'll allow you some time for planning, do appraisals and drafting of new code provisions if you so choose. However, all path, no path is without risks. If you made changes to the zoning district afterwards, it could subject the county to Harris Act liability. And just likewise, because you initiated a moratorium does not mean that you have to make changes to zone. You could get a report back, determine you do want, don't want to make changes, you make some changes or a large amount of changes. So one thing that has come up that I think you get questions, you get questions about, I've seen discussions, is exclusionary zoning. Exclusionary zoning is a legal phrase that's used when a jurisdiction tries to prohibit a use entirely. And so there are cases that if you did that, if you didn't allow anywhere in your jurisdiction, the limitation has to be indispensable to the general zoning plan. You've got to have good reasons for that. You also, when you have, you're dealing with interstate commerce, there's issues with the Constitution and the dormant commerce clause as well. So all those are types of things that your staff could consider in reporting back to you. There's a lot of moving parts. So options that could be available to council if you chose. The path we're on now is the site plan and process. You do not have a site plan application received at this point. You do have standards that the applicant will have to meet when they do apply for site plan. Seeking alternative locations or purchasing or leasing the property, you have previously directed that. So some discussions have occurred along those lines. The last, I think, we changed with Senate Bill 250, which prohibited changes, is you could consider changes. Do it in the form of a moratorium, study changes of the zoning district. You could have a motion to direct staff to review and draft changes to the I-2 zoning district. As part of that, we would ask or recommend to you that the council could declare a pending ordinance at that time. So when you direct us to come back with a proposed moratorium, a pending ordinance doctrine is something you see in cases where someone is not allowed to file for, say, a site plan application because a governing body is actively considering changes to that zoning district. That could apply to all uses in that I-2 district. You could also, as part of that, the staff would be directed to bring back a moratorium for a period not exceeding 12 months, starting from, for example, if it were today, and that would apply to the issuance of development orders, development permits, site plans or building permits for all uses in I-2, just like the pending ordinance doctrine. As I mentioned, different paths have different risks. We've talked about them in the past, I won't belabor the point. You know, equitable stoppable is something you see often raised to try to stop a government from making changes to its zoning code. We think that risk will not get better with... We think that risk will not get better with time. Once a site plan and application is submitted, a claim is likely right. So, arguably, if you could act before a site plan and application is received, that legally would give the argument against it. Procedural and substantive due process violations. Procedural due process is where a government fails to follow rules or procedures to give basically a fair hearing. Substantive due process is more where they look at, if you have a protected property interest in property, and you would argue the interest was deprived for an improper motive or by arbitrary and capricious means. Inverse condemnation through a regulatory taking, we face that from time to time. That's kind of the standard, very old type of takings claim prior to Burtia-Harris coming into existence. And basically, somebody would have to argue that the effect of the governmental action on a property is so devastating, that's the equivalent of us taking a property by eminent domain, you need to compensate the property owner for that. We talked a little bit about dormant commerce clause when you're dealing with prohibiting uses involved in interstate commerce. We've talked about Burtia-Harris liability, which again, allows you to do some things, there may be liability for that. The city is looking at eminent domain and said they would report back to us. And lastly, the legislature has, one of the uses I know has been discussed with I-2 and Florida statutes, there is some partial exemption when it comes to fuel terminals, when those terminals are supplied by pipeline or marine vessels. Here, you know, if it's outside, does that supply by pipeline or marine? Our argument would be that that would not apply. We're happy to answer any questions you have on what those options are. If you're inclined to pursue one of them, we could certainly assist you with a motion to that effect.
Thank you. Councilman Johansson.
Sir, I don't know if you and Matt have questions, but I'd like to make a motion, unless there's question.
Question.
Yeah, a couple of us have questions.
Okay, I'll go to the bottom.
Okay. Matt, go ahead, Councilman Reinhart.
Thank you, Chair. A quick question. The moratorium process, whether it's six or 12 months, that doesn't prohibit the applicant from submitting anything, does it? It does.
It would have that effect. I'll let Paulo speak to that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council, Paulo Sorio, senior assistant county attorney. The whole purpose of a moratorium is to freeze everything in place. So, you know, depending upon how you would word it and the whole...
Chairman, I'm sorry. Paulo, will you speak right into that mic?
Is this on? Okay. The whole purpose of the moratorium in this case is just, is to freeze everything in place. So, the moratorium, if you direct us, would be to prevent the submission of any applications and submit the issuance of any development orders. That is also the same thing of what Mike alluded earlier to, is the pending ordinance doctrine. If you direct us to actively take a look at the I-2 zoning district, it has the effect of stopping any submissions of any site plan applications or the issuance of any development orders while you change the zoning districts. So, the moratorium is a more formal way of doing that.
Okay, so it pauses everything from their application process, and it gives us also an opportunity to look at other avenues, whether that be alternative sites, whether that would be rezoning, whatever the case may be.
Well, it would have the effect of having your staff look at the entire I-2 zoning district.
Yeah.
And legislatively determine if you want to make changes to that. It has the effect of you would not be processing any applications, like Paulo said, during that time, while the moratorium is in effect.
Just for that area?
For I-2. For I-2 zoning period? Does it matter countywide? It would just where you have I-2.
Unincorporated area.
Yeah, unincorporated. Right. So, it would not, for example, apply to, say, I-1, which is a different zoning.
Sure. All right, thank you.
And that was my two questions. So, thank you very much for asking. But Paulo, just to make it exceptionally clear, this means if we had a 12-month moratorium, it halts any application for an industrial use?
Yes, in the I-2 zoning district.
And it's not site-specific, it's any I-2 zoning?
In the county. Yes, in the I-2 zoning district, in the unincorporated area of the county.
You can't control the cities?
That's correct.
Okay. And then either one of you, what happens at the end of that 12-month moratorium? You will bring us back recommendations for...
Yes, the purpose of the motions is to comprehensively look at the I-2 zoning district. As Mike pointed out, the I-2 zoning district doesn't function in the same manner as all of our other zoning districts. Our other zoning districts have a list of uses. If you're not on the list, if you're not on the list, you're not allowed there. In the I-2, you have a catch-all. Any industrial use is allowed by right. So, that's something we want to take a look at comprehensively whenever we're looking at the entire I-2 zoning district. There may be some uses that we want as special exceptions, that we want certain distance from population centers that, you know, may not be appropriate in that specific location when it's adjacent or not compatible to another area. So, we want the opportunity to freeze everything in place, you know, to comprehensively look at all of those and to plan for the future for this heavy industrial zoning district.
And when does that? That comes back to the council to make those decisions. You will make recommendations. Does that happen at the end of 12 months, or could it happen somewhere between now and the 12?
It happens somewhere between that. It depends upon how much research needs to be done and where we are in the process of bringing back those changes to the zoning district.
So, that, you know, it could be up to that amount. If it's done sooner, bring it back. Paulo, and I forgot to call you up to correct anything that you disagree with, but basically, if we, there were proposed changes to your I-2 zoning district, they're going to have to go to your PLDRC, and they're going to have to come to the council for two hearings. So, there's some time that's going to take to go through that.
Right. Okay, thank you. I just, I think it's important that we make that clear. David, do you have a question?
Nope.
Okay. Jake Johansson.
Sir, at this point, I'd like to make a motion before we hear from the public, because I think it'll guide the conversation. I'm very interested in proactively moving forward to sort out this future as it pertains to I-2 zoning in general. Obviously, there's a lot of people here that have a particular development in question, but I'm concerned about, as Paulo said, I-2 zoning in general in the unincorporated portions of our county. So, I'm also, we talked in the question period about 12 months. If we go 12 months, that's going to, that's going to get us real close to budget season, and I don't want to dilly-dally. So, I make a motion to propose a nine-month moratorium on applications for I-2 zoning in the unincorporated area, and have staff prepare that pending ordinance and bring it back to us. That'll put us, staff's feet to the fire to come back with a, an answer to us before we're in the middle of budget, the last month before budget gets approved, and we'll be able to deal with this just before that and put it to bed, whichever way it goes. So, again, a motion for a nine-month moratorium on applications for I-2 in the unincorporated county, and for staff to prepare the pending ordinance.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Johansson, I think you'll find this to be friendly, just from a legal standpoint, so we have it covered. I understand that your intent is to motion direct staff to review draft changes to the I-2 zoning district. We would, as part of that, you'd be declaring a pending ordinance, which will allow us to not accept or issue development orders, development permits, site plans, or building permits for all uses within I-2, and bring back an agenda with a proposed moratorium for up to 12 months. I'm sorry, nine months, thank you, Russ, for those same types of orders and permits that I just stated. That is correct.
That's exactly what you said, wasn't it?
Legal terms.
Is there a second on the motion?
Yes, Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Okay. Councilman Johansson makes the motion for a nine-month moratorium, in which period of time, staff will bring back recommendations for the I-2 zoning areas in unincorporated Volusia County and everything else that the county attorney just said. Motion by Jake Johansson, second by Troy Kent. Before I call for a vote, we still have council members that would like to speak, and then I'll...
And just one point of clarification. We would understand it'd be nine months from today.
Nine months from today.
Yes.
Councilman Santiago.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A question first, and a statement if I may. This is a more, Mike, I know it's, the motion is for nine months. I'm personally a fan of 12 months, but at the nine-month period, if so choose, do we have legal capabilities to extend that?
I think you could. I think, as Paulo said, not to exceed 12, only, and we, why do we say that? We say that because the Burtia-Harris Act specifically makes a statement about up to 12. Doesn't prevent somebody from still trying to challenge it.
Sure.
But I think that gives us some assurance, and that's typically what you see. I would ask Paulo and Clay maybe come up, because I know Clay's staff will be doing the line chair of the work on evaluating those uses. You may want to ask him about that period of time as well.
And before he does, Chairman, may I jump in very quickly?
Certainly. Thank you.
I tend to agree with Councilman Santiago. I like the 12 months, but Jake brought up a point that I appreciate, and that is, it makes staff move on this. We don't sit and just kind of wait for that. Not that I think, Mr. Dyer, your staff would, but this doesn't just sit in limbo and we think, oh, well, we have a year. We can, we can get ahead of this and come out in a really strong position with the data that we get from our legal department. So, that's why I did make the second, but I understood exactly what you meant about the 12 months, giving us a little more time. But I think, I think Mr. Johansson is on to something with budget season and how quickly things start clicking up here when we're looking at a $1.2 billion budget and, you know, we're moving along. So, that's why I agreed to the second.
Yeah, and again, I have no problem with the ninth. The thing with the 12, and I'm not arguing for you guys, I just wanted, because it says up to 12, which means it could have still been done within nine or 10, depending on staff's, you know, availability, or six, exactly. But I'm okay with the motion. I just wanted to put on the record, Mr. Chair, I think is, this, the conversation over the last couple of months in the I-2 category, as I've read through the I-2 category, I have a problem with a lot of the sections in I-2. So, I think there's a lot of housecleaning we can do in revamping the entire I-2 category, and this is certainly an opportunity to do that. So, the attention that's been brought to it has opened eyes on other areas. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm ready to move when you are.
Mr. Chair, just for that clarification, I think we can accommodate that, something for an initial moratorium for nine months, and then by action of the council prior to the expiration, they can issue like a, just another ordinance or resolution for an additional three months, so it would not exceed 12. But it would, we would leave it up to the determination of council, you know, staff will work, and if we are close, but we need a little bit more time, we will write ourselves an additional time period in the moratorium ordinance.
Thank you. I'll just say, before we go to the public comment, Jake, I think that was, I think that's a good idea, again, for the reasons that you stated. I would, I would guess that the public that's sitting here would appreciate that too, because they want to hear the final outcome. And just so, I'm getting ready to call the public that wanted to speak on this, so you can, you can come and give us your direction as to what is being proposed here, but it does bring a date certain to give you an answer, but not just for one site. It's for any I-2 site in unincorporated Volusia County. If somebody brings an application right now, it's a no-go. So, until the final decision is made, and then we can change zoning, even categories within I-2 if we need to, because let's look at what happened at Ormond. Things have changed in 30 years. Neighborhood grew up around a heavy industrial site, and that's, you're probably not the only location. So, I think this is a good way to proceed. Before I call for the vote, this is kind of why I started at the beginning. We have four people that wanted to talk on something besides this, but hopefully they will bear with us here. I'm going to call your names in order. If you would like to come and speak to this, you'll have three minutes. Come up to the front, tell us where you're from. You don't have to give your specific address for safety reasons, just tell us where you're from, and tell us what you're here to say. Patricia Franzom, you are first. And I do have a note while Patricia is coming.
Mr. Chairman, just for a point, and maybe for the public's possibility, if we can give the public guidance, if they so choose, if they support the motion, they could just wave in support of the motion from their chair, maybe save a lot of people time. If you want to speak, you could certainly speak. I don't know if there's any objection to that, but if you oppose or you support the motion, I'd like to give them the opportunity to maybe stay in their chair and say, I support the motion, or wave in support.
And they can do that as they, as I call their name. Also, Patricia, as you come up, the fire marshal has said we're at capacity, no more people here, so there are some folks downstairs. So, I'm going to call several names that, so they can be ready to come up if they care to speak. Patricia will be first, and then Raymond will be second, and Arthur Armstrong will be third. Patricia Franzom.
Hi. Good afternoon, and thank you, and I do support the motion. Now, so my name is Patricia Franzom. I am a homeowner in Bear Creek Village, a 55-plus community in Ormond Beach. Now that the governor has taken Volusia County off of SB 250, I request that you remove heavy industrial zoning, not only from 874 Hull Road, but from other areas of Volusia County as well. Too many communities have land near them that is zoned as heavy industrial. If you remove heavy industrial zones from Volusia County, you will be protecting families, seniors, businesses, and the environment. Remove heavy industrial zones and use these properties to protect trees, wetlands, and animals. Create walking trails, or just leave the land alone, and let us all be surrounded by the wonderful gift of nature. If you remove heavy industrial zones from Volusia County, you will be making a positive change for all of the people you were elected to serve. Keep us safe, keep us healthy. Remove heavy industrial zoning from 874 Hull Road and other communities of Volusia County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I also support the proposal, and I'd just like to mention that Patricia and I come from an area in Westchester County, New York. Over 20 years, development took a once beautiful area into a traffic jam. And as it grew, and trucks were added to the traffic, it became like the Brooklyn Queens Expressway at rush hour every day. To add the trucks that would be required for heavy industrial would create a nightmare. US-1 and other roads in Volusia County would be backed up. And just to mention, in the last couple of months, there were three accidents involving trucks on, went through it with trucks, but one with another one, on US-1 between Airport Road and 95. One with a fatality, a truck motorcycle. It is imperative not to add that hazard to our community. Thank you.
Thank you.[1795.65][1795.65]
Thank you. Next will be Arthur Armstrong, followed by Suzanne Shiber, followed by Steve Osterhaus.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and members. I stand, and I had a presentation, but I don't think I need to do all that, but I do because of what you've brought forward here tonight. A lot of those, hopefully, those answers are going to be in our favor as a community. It's important. This community has, and it was mentioned earlier, that it's grown up. We have so many residential properties, so close to these commercial properties. It's really a problem. You've got to look at the density that we have there. There's one particular home, I just have to mention this, there's a residential home that's so close to this potential development, it's about 2,000 feet. There's three children that play in the yard every day after school, and they would be absolutely gone if there's a problem. If we had an explosion already in that facility, even if it's not this proposed facility, we have a batch plant there that does asphalt. It produces a lot of problems there. You can always take the orders and whatnot from that facility on any given day, and it's either in Bear Creek, or at Ormond Lakes, or other surrounding areas. That is a very, very dense and bad area. We have a train that runs through there almost hourly now. It used to be, 20 years ago, you wouldn't even see a train there, maybe twice a day. But those are the things that I'm glad to hear tonight, Mr. Chairman, that you have made the step. But the thing I also am concerned about, being an old ex-politician from Massachusetts, is nine months is a long time. And please, take this as a grain of salt or whatever you want to do. I want to see every one of you guys do something about this before election time, because I will not vote for, if I had the chance, and I'm sure other people are not going to vote for anyone that's going to let this go through without a fight and without blood hanging or something. It can't be. And I would, I promise you, that's what would happen. You've got thousands and thousands of people in that area that are against this, and that will become time for voting. They won't forget that. Thank you.
Suzanne Shiber, Steve Osterhaus, Robin Magliero.
Good evening. Suzanne Shiber, representing Dream Green Volusia. From the local Advocates Voice News, on November 16, 2023, Judge George Polk ruled at the Brevard County Courthouse that the city of Titusville approved to change their laws that guarantee the right to clean water for all residents. The right to clean water amendment was approved by over 82% of Titusville voters in November of 2022. The city of Titusville dispatched its general counsel and especially retained attorney to represent its interest at the hearing. These legal representatives financed by taxpayer dollars were tasked with contesting the citizens' efforts to uphold the validity of their 2022 right to clean water votes. However, the judge presiding over the case ultimately ruled in favor of Speak Up Titusville, deeming the city's arguments insufficient grounds to invalidate the charter amendment, and divvied the quote from the article. "The city of Titusville did not represent what their citizens voted for. Their concern was more about what might happen pertaining to lawsuits and budget." The city of Titusville lost to their very own citizens whose government used the citizens' taxpayer dollars to sue them and did not represent the citizens' rights. At the last council meeting, I read directly from the Volusia County Charter, "Minimum standards for environmental protection, division of powers, body and corporate politic." Section 101, the purpose, "We, the people of Volusia County, state of Florida, in order to create a more responsible and efficient local government due in accordance with the Constitution and laws of the state of Florida, ordain and establish as our charter and form of government this charter of Volusia County, Florida. The Home Rule Charter created a council manager form of government which took effect January 1 of 1971. The county council is the legislative arm of Volusia County and sets policy for the government. In perspective, it's the council's responsibility to," in the charter's own words, "politik for rights and powers of local self-government for the people they represent. Please stop using our taxpayer dollars against us citing what might, could, or possibly happened pertaining to a lawsuit. The people of Volusia County voted for the charter. I want to thank the audience for attending this meeting, recognizing that we are the government. The council's responsibility is to uphold our charter and home rule. Change the industrial zoning, please. Represent the people who the charter was meant to represent that we, the people, voted for. The charter clearly defines the citizens' rights in terms of environmental standards for public safety. Thank you for your time."
You must be Steve. Then we have Robin Magliero and Virginia, Virginia from Ormond Beach. Go ahead.
Can you hear me? Yeah. Okay, I look at this site here, and where the proposed fuel farm is going to be, it doesn't seem like a good fit with all the mixed residential in there. One of my chief concerns is the, all the wells out there. People are counting on clean water, and they count in those wells every day. Also, it's too close to the airport where you have more than one, I believe, more than, at least one aviation college that teaches pilots how to fly. They're coming in and out of there, making landings and takeoffs. And being in that close of proximity, if they ever ran into one of them tanks, it would be a major catastrophic deal. I've seen a bulk tank on fire as a kid. I'm telling you, it's not a pretty sight. That thing will burn for days, and people are breathing the petroleum in the air. Then I also become concerned, do we have the capabilities of dealing with a catastrophic event with our emergency services people? Okay? As great of a job as they all do. That's a chief concern of mine, okay? Are the hospitals prepared in an event that big? Is our EMS prepared for an event that big? These are all questions we have to ask ourselves to keep everybody safe. So really, that's, I really think it's the safety that we have to look at, you know, and I don't think it's a great site. There's too much residential. If it was a planned community, planned communities say, we only have industrial in this area. This is not the case here. It's highly residential. And so I would ask you to consider that, stop this farm. Thank you.
Robin Magliero, followed by Virginia Agruza, followed by Mary Beth Cunningham.
Good evening, council. My speech is going to be very short, actually, because of what you just discussed. So this is what I have to say to you tonight. On August 23rd, there was historic attendance at the county council meeting to voice our opposition against Belvedere Terminals building in Ormond Beach, Florida. The last three months, we have had to do our own research as to how Belvedere met with the city and the county. We researched who Belvedere Terminals was. They are a company owned by Grupo Mexico with a dismal safety record. They have never built a fuel terminal. We have been to meetings, expressed our concerns, sent emails, spoken to the news, and we continue to research. The city of Ormond Beach has taken the necessary steps to keep Belvedere from building. You were voted into office by your constituents to represent us, to be our voices. We are here tonight, we, the people, united to tell you to be our voices, to do what's needed to protect the residents of Ormond Beach and Volusia County, to stop Belvedere terminals from building, and to remove the heavy industrial zoning. Thank you.
Virginia Agruza, followed by Mary Beth Cunningham, followed by Brenda Bartlow. And if you're one of those people, just come down and get a seat on the front row if you care to speak. If you don't care to speak, just wave from your seat and say, I agree.
Hi. I'm Virginia Agruza. I'm also from Bear Creek. Everyone has said almost everything I'm going to say, but I just want to say, we need to change the heavy industrial to light, not just Hull Road, but all of Volusia. We have a responsibility, you have a responsibility, to protect our communities, to keep us safe, to give us quality of life, to help the environment. We want to have a right to clean air, to clean water, to live in a safe environment. You all know we're not going to. We live in the lightning capital of the world. I mean, really, who would build a fuel terminal in the lightning capital of the world? In 1999, Berkeley did a big study for 10 years. At that time, they said, in the states that had the hot weather and everything, 67% were explosions, even though now they say it's 30-something percent. It isn't safe in Florida. That's all I'm saying. We want you to change the heavy industrial to light and give us our lives back, because we really don't have them yet. Thank you, everybody.
I'm Mary Beth Cunningham from Bear Creek as well, and just to build on what she was saying, I can't agree more. I thank you for the moratorium you're putting in place. I'm a little worried, we don't want to lose our momentum over the next nine months to really stop what's happening from happening. I do request that you change the zoning of 874 Hull Road. You change it to a lower, lesser, not heavy industrial. There's no place for heavy industrial that's close to residents, as you already know. Three months, we've been stating all the reasons why. But something that's bothered me, and I spoke about it in Bear Creek the other day, you know, you see something, say something. It's been for a real long time, and I think one of the biggest concerns I have now is how close we got to selling not only the East Coast Railway to a foreign entity, but giving them the ability to build a potential terrorist act in a residential area. So I see something, we all see something, we're saying something, and now it's kind of up to you. Do something. Please change the industrial zoning to light industrial. Do not let this happen this close to residents, this close to the waterways. I just beg of you to please listen to what we're saying and change the zoning of 874, and I thank you.
Brenda Bartlow, you'll be followed by Celeste Masterabuano.
Good evening. My name's Brenda Bartlow, and I've been a resident of Volusia County for 12 years, and I live about 3/4 of a mile from this proposed fuel depot. For those of us who live and work in the Ormond Beach section of Volusia County, we first learned that our idyllic beach community was under assault in August of this year when we got the news of the proposed massive bulk fuel storage facility to be built in our own backyards. Since then, it's been a roller coaster ride with hurdles at every turn that just never seemed to end. We've publicly heard from Volusia Fire and Safety Personnel, the Volusia School System, and Ormond Beach City officials, all opposing the construction of this facility in the proposed location and citing very valid reasons for their opposition. So as we hopefully come to the end of this journey, that has been a nightmare for those of us directly affected. And I say nightmare for the following reasons. We face devaluation of our homes, possible rise in home insurance premiums, or even cancellation, given today's Florida insurance environment, possible contamination of our wells and septic systems and water systems, impact on air quality, constant movement of tanker trucks on backroads and highways, impact on our local wetlands, and the proposed location with respect to the local airport runways. So I am asking this body to step up to the plate and not only say no to the Belvedere bulk fuel storage facility, but to back up your no with actions that speak louder than words. With the amendment made to SB 250, you now have the ability to end our nightmare and eliminate the possibility of turning Ormond Beach, Florida into another East Palestine, Ohio. I thank you for your time and attention.
Okay, next is Celeste, followed by Patrice Kenny, followed by Bernice Wilson.
Good afternoon. I'm Celeste Masterabuano, and I live in Bear Creek. I've been an owner since 2006. I do support your motion, and I thank you for that. I've seen much growth in my town. I moved here because I liked the small-town feel. I have seen it being built up tremendously in recent years, and I understand that part of that is necessary. But I'm afraid it's becoming overcrowded, and I'm not looking for any more industry to move in and make it impossible to have peace and quiet that I'm used to. So please keep the small-town feel, and let's keep the heavy industrial out of Ormond Beach. Thank you.
I am another Bear Creek'er, Patrice Kenny. Nice to see my fellow residents and community members here. I also am thankful for the moratorium vote. I would have preferred the 12 months, quite frankly. We don't want to lose our mojo here and organizational skills and our research, trying to get this taken care of. I absolutely think it would benefit Volusia County in general to get rid of this heavy industrial designation. It would give Volusia County in general a much nicer environment, and it would prevent a series of mishaps like this happening again. So I know not all of you live near Bear Creek, you don't all reside in Ormond Beach, but you are all Volusia County councilmen, and so you're responsible to all of us despite where you live. So as a Volusia County resident and voter, I would ask that you certainly consider removing this heavy industrial zoning. And personally, I don't care if we get sued, because I think it's going to cost less money to fight a lawsuit, which I think you can win, because you have to protect us. I think you have good cause for that, and it's going to cost you less in the long run to do the right thing. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
I'm Bernice Wilson from Bear Creek, and I couldn't say anything more than what these people have so eloquently put forth, and I beg you, please, protect our community.
Thank you. Next, we have Sheila Lind, followed by Ricky, Ricky Petty? Ricky in the house? Followed by Patrick, is it Steeples?
Hi, Sheila Lynn. I'm a Bear Creek resident. My husband and I have two adult children. Both of them have served this country in the United States Marine Corps. We're very proud of that. And when they call us for advice, not very often anymore, as they're getting up in their careers and they're doing very well, but when they do call us for advice, I say, well, you have to make the list. And the list I'm talking about is the pros and cons list. So with any big decision, everybody should make a pros and cons list. We have a whole room full of people here who have just listed off thing after thing on the cons side. What I have not heard, not from one person, from Belvedere, the news, from any of you all, is what is on the pros side? What is the benefit to our community, to our county, to our state for allowing this fuel terminal to be built? What is the goal here, besides making a whole bunch of rich people richer by building a fuel terminal, investing their money into it, transporting gasoline on a tanker on the railroad that goes behind my house to a holding tank, and then distributing it all over the state of Florida? What is the benefit? Why do we need this? I just came back from a cruise. I got off the cruise ship at this little island, and the first thing I see at this little island is fuel storage, and I'm like, well, that makes sense. They don't have fuel there. They have to bring it in and store it there. We don't have a problem. Who decided all of a sudden in 2023, we needed to start storing 20 million gallons of fuel and put it in my backyard? I don't understand why there is not a list of pros here. You have a- I don't understand why there is not a list of pros here, you have a whole list of cons here. I'm going to ask three things. First off, I'd like you all to come visit us at Bear Creek. Please drive on over. I'll have you over for dinner, we'll have you at the clubhouse, go for a dip in the pool. Please, come and see the area that we're talking about. It's important to do that. Secondly, I would like Hull Road to be zoned a no-hazmat road. There shouldn't be tractor trailers, tankers with fuel crossing railroad tracks on the way to the kids' playfield. They just shouldn't be there. If they're going to get through and they're going to build this thing, make them make their own road. So just, I'm making a motion. Please zone Hull Road a no-hazmat road. It's a simple thing. Just make that one thing happen. And lastly, I contacted the Federal Railroad Administration about this specific point, about their starting to haul fuel on trains that go behind my house, and the safety of the tracks and the crossings, and asked them to please look into this. I would like all of you to do the same. Please contact the Federal Railroad Administration about that. Thank you, appreciate your time.
Ricky Petty, Patrick Steeples, I believe, and Sean Holly. Ricky Petty is not here. I'll hold it back for a second. Patrick, Patrick's not here. Sean Holly. Catherine Pantay. And we have a winner.
Now that SB 250 excludes Volusia County, it is time to take swift action and change the zoning at 874 Hull Road. Not only do we need to address the zoning on Hull Road, it is imperative to remove all heavy industrial zoning throughout Volusia County, so this fuel terminal cannot be built anywhere in our county. On November 6th council meeting, I referenced our Home Charter specifically 202, 2, 3A and B, abuse of the environment. The county shall prevent the development or use of land by persons, partnerships, or corporations which will destroy or have substantially adverse effect on the environment of the county. Such destruction or adverse effects may include any or all of the following: pollution of the air, land, or water by foreign substances, including noxious liquids, gases, or solid waste, as well as potentially harmful conditions, including the creation of unnecessary, injurious heat, noise, or odor. Now refer to Article 2, Section 50-31, which states the following: Pollution means the presence in the outdoor atmosphere or water of any substance and quantities, condition, or manner which may be harmful or injurious to human health or welfare, to animal or aquatic life or marine life, which unreasonably interferes with or may interfere with the enjoyment of life or property, or the future use and enjoyment for all legitimate purposes. Water includes but is not limited to any and all rivers, streams, creeks, lakes, ponds, and pounding reservoirs, springs, wells, marshes, and all other bodies of surface or underground water, including but not limited to fresh brackis, saline, or tidal, situated wholly or partly within the county, within bordering upon the county. Local governments should be supporting, representing, and defending their citizens against a corporation who boasts by making reference to being a 10,000-pound gorilla versus blindsiding the residents by seeking over $4 million from the state to subsidize corporate welfare, only to seek relocation to another area in our county. Nowhere in our county is as acceptable or safe for residents as all our rivers, oceans, and streams are connected. None of us have an objection to the $4 million being used to purchase 874 Hull Road. In closing, last meeting, the county attorney took aim at a resident claiming the resident called them liars. The resident actually said, "We have been lied to?" What the resident said is factually correct. As residents were not informed on August 23rd that the county had an actual pre-application meeting on June 9th, 2022, the residents only found out about the county meeting by FOIA requests, recording of an Ormond Beach meeting that took place on June 22nd, 2022. Leaving out important details is intentionally misleading and is defined as lying by omission. This is dishonest behavior and erodes the public trust in our county government. In order to work towards trusting relationship, I am now requesting all county pre-application and application meetings be recorded in addition to zoning changes. I am not opposed to the motion that was made tonight, only I want the zoning at 874 needs to be changed now.
And the last three will be Elena Kraft, David Smith, if you just want to come down, and Rebecca. Is Rebecca in the house? There she is.
Good afternoon. My name is Elena Kraft. I am here today to ask you to change the zoning of 874 Hull Road immediately, and also remove heavy industrial zoning from Volusia County. Over the past three months, we've come before you scared about the future of our town. Day after day, week after week, month after month, we advocated and pleaded with you to put a stop to it. On this Tuesday, a very busy day of the holiday season, we come before you again, this time with renewed hope that you will listen to our unified voice and put a stop to the fuel farm once and for all. Zoning in its most basic form separates land areas, with the assumption that separation of land uses promotes the public health and welfare of the population. Definite links have now been established between land uses, the environmental burdens they impose, and the health impacts suffered by nearby communities. The current zoning of 874 Hull Road is left unrestricted by you, our county representatives. That means that virtually anything can be built there, which leaves thousands of people, many of whom are elderly, completely unprotected. The question is, should a zoning designation that was decided on more than 20 years ago prevent you from acting in the best interest of your constituents today? The answer is a resounding no. Yet over the past three months, we felt that we had to convince some of you of the job you are elected to do. A county that allows heavy industrial zoning steps away from neighborhoods is not serving their constituents, but rather the profit-driven industries. Whether the result of benign neglect or overt recklessness, putting business and economic profits over the health of people will lead to disastrous results. We've been labeled NIMBYs. Well, I'm here to say that in the case of heavy industrial operations in Volusia County, not in my backyard must become not in anybody's backyard. The discussion needs to shift from location-specific to risk-specific. The public should not be exposed to known risks in the quest for profit. People over profit should be the overarching policy driving your decision-making. I sincerely hope that today you will set the right precedent for your constituents and lay the groundwork for a safe and beautiful Volusia for generations to come. Thank you.
Counsel, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm David Smith, disabled veteran in Ormond Lakes. I've spoken to you before. I'm right across the street from the proposed fuel depot. In previous visits here, we've talked about airport safety concerns, heavy vehicle traffic, motorcycle death there during Biketoberfest, and the prevailing drift underground of a known hazardous spill that goes east through Ormond Lakes toward the Tamoka River and the Tamoka River Basin. I have spoken about the subterfuge of not delivering the public announcement to any of the affected neighbors of this site. I'm asking this council to come together and change this site's zoning from heavy industrial, despite the stated disinterest expressed from a portion of this council since it was not affecting their district. This is on your watch. Protect Volusia County residents. Thank you.
Thanks for having me and my kids, as usual. I came here today in hopes that we'd have resolution to this, but it's clear that you're essentially delaying the inevitable, right? 12-month moratorium, okay, fine. The same time, like someone stated, our momentum may die down. I'm tired of being at these meetings. They have the week off of school, I have a half-day from work today. But instead of continuing to put up Christmas decorations at my home with my kids, I have to make sure I'm here to voice my opinion and my concerns for fighting this fuel farm, because as my kids will tell you whenever I ask them, "Why is mommy fighting this?", they say, "To keep us safe", right? I am tired of coming to these meetings, whether it's city, county, tired of having to listen to the runaround, the punting that constantly goes on. "The city doesn't want this, the county doesn't want this, oh, the city's going to stop this." No, the county can stop this. It is clear that now the ball is in your court. You can stop this, as people have said. Put an end to it so we can stop coming here. There was a day that I was taking my sons to school, my daughter's in daycare, and there was something that he didn't know how to do. And the teacher sent me a message saying, hey, he was having a little bit of trouble with this. So I asked him, I said, "Why haven't you told me?" Because you know that I'm always available to help you with your work. And he says to me, "Because you're too busy working with the fuel farm and meeting the fuel farm people." I am tired of that. Put an end to this so that I can celebrate the holidays and next year without having to worry if I need to put my house for sale or move to another community because you, who we have elected to do something about it, and it's not in your backyard, or your backyard won't do anything about it. Fix it. You have the power to fix it.
Okay, that's the end of the public comments on this item that we are now debating. We've asked questions, we've heard from the public, and so now we'll open it up for debate from council members. We have a motion on the floor. Michael Dyer, would you read again the legal version of the motion?
And Jake, I know you'll correct me if I'm misstating this. All right. Motion to direct staff to review and draft changes to the I-2 zoning district, declare a pending ordinance, which would result in not accepting or issuing development orders, development permits, site plans, or building permits for all uses within the I-2 zoning district of the county and incorporated area. Draft and bring back a moratorium for up to nine months from today's date on the acceptance of the issuance of development orders, development permits, site plans, or building permits for all uses in the I-2 district.
Okay, thank you. Council members, any further discussion? Okay. Then I will call the roll, and in just a second, I will say to the public who just spoke eloquently and left no doubt in our minds what you want, I believe you are getting exactly what you asked for with this. This ends, if somebody comes in tomorrow, it's a no-go. Anywhere in an I-2 location in unincorporated Volusia County, which is all that we can control, it gives us the possibility of changing it not just at one location, but at any location. It's not, in my opinion, it's not punting and kicking it down the road, it's a more secure way of doing it completely in our county, and it puts it, with the change from 12 to nine months, directly in the middle of election season. So there is no running and hiding from anybody that sits up here, if that's what you're concerned about. Councilman Kent.
Thank you, Chairman. I appreciate your comments. And before we vote on this, I just publicly want to thank Bear Creek and Ormond Beach, not only those that live in the city limits, but those in the unincorporated area, for showing up. It matters. It's impactful. When I was walking into the parking lot, I saw the bus with everybody getting off, and I got to tell you, I gave a fist pump to myself, because this is how government really is supposed to work. So I want to applaud you for caring enough and showing up. It means something. Briefly, Chairman, I'll also just add, this is my district. This is where I reside. Some of you in Bear Creek might remember Pat Benke, dear friend of mine. And I'll just tell you, for me, I vow to continue to fight until this is no longer an issue for us. And now, a brief question for our attorney. So we've heard, you know, how about today, just changing this zoning today and putting this to bed? So, Mr. Dyer, after this vote, if another motion was made to change this zoning today from I-2, what are your concerns from a legal standpoint? I think it's important to hear it.
Sure.
I care.
Yeah. State law provides a process to change the uses in a zoning district, so it would have to go to your planning commission, what you call your PLDRC. It would have to come in front of this council for two hearings. That's a state law, it's not within our control.
PLDRC before it comes to us?
Yes.
And, but this council could direct this to go to PLDRC, correct?
Yes, it would have to go to PLDRC, and it's advisory board to you, so you don't have to take their recommendation.
Right. And I don't mean to cut you off, but I saw Clay Ervin, best in the business, walk down here. Could you add anything to that, as far as what the attorney said about, anything for clarification as far as changing this zoning?
No, sir. State law is very specific on how local governments can administratively change zoning of private property. So we would have to go through your local planning agency, which is your Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission. It has to be duly noticed in a public hearing, have to give the ability or the property owner to be aware of what's going on.
Sure.
So therefore, again, it's something that you can't do tonight like that. It does have to go through a procedure where it is the Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission, and because it's administratively being done based on the county's initiative, not the private property owner, there's two readings that would be required here at the county council.
Thank you very much. And Chairman and Counsel, after we have this vote, I will be making a motion to send this to PLDRC so that we can start the process.
Chris, would you call the roll?
Mr. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Johansson?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Mr. Reinhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Brower?
Yes. And the motion carries five to zero for a nine-month moratorium. And, Mr. Dyer, you just heard what Councilman Kent's going to recommend. Is that not, did we not just start that entire process?
You did.
Okay. So what's going to go to PLDRC?
Yes, well, whatever recommendations would go forward, I would assume we have a report back to you on what these changes would be, and Clay can jump in if I'm missing something. But it's not anything under the state process that happens overnight. But what the purpose of the moratoria does in announcing in the motion that passed today is if you got an application in I-2 tomorrow, that is not processed to allow you the time to review and study it. And you've got a variety of heavy industrial uses there. I mean, the one that has been the subject of a lot of discussion was passed in 2006. So it would allow you to consider maybe some of the, maybe the heavy one you don't want to be permitted, maybe it's a special exception with criteria, distance criteria from certain other uses. Those are the types of things you're going to be faced with as options. Those are the types of things you're gonna be faced with as options, decisions about where do you want what type of use.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Kent.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And, you know, I'm an elected council member, as all of you gentlemen are up here. But if that wasn't explained to me before this meeting, I guarantee you, they didn't know in the audience as well that, well, this is automatically gonna go to PLDRC. So the reason I'm gonna make a motion is it's, it leaves all the guesswork out of this. It's on the public record. We are aware that there, we've just voted for a moratorium, which I'm extremely pleased about. We are owning this. We're not pushing this on Ormond Beach. This is county property, and we're owning it. But at the same time, it puts an exclamation point, and it lets staff and our residents know that we are asking this to go through our PLDRC so that it can then come back to us the right way for two hearings. So Chairman, at this point, I'll make a motion, just to put an exclamation point on it, that we send the I-2 zoning countywide to our PLDRC so that they can have a discussion, a healthy discussion, and a recommendation for this council. Unless, unless, and let me ask you, Paulo, just for a moment, would it be cleaner, instead of countywide, if it was just this location?
No, it would be cleaner if it was countywide.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. So that's what my motion is then, Chairman.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion? And then I'll call on the county manager.
Mr. Chair, as a clarification, as part of the review of the I-2 zoning district, one of the requirements are that we have to send it to our PLDRC. It is part of the process. So we were going to do that anyway. It's, I mean, we can, we can, we can start a, go to them to find out what they think of what the appropriate uses are in the I-2 zoning district. But, you know, you're giving us two directions, one to bring back a moratorium, the other to bring back a revised I-2 zoning district that is more modern and takes new account, basically, you know, locations and criteria. So we can take those to PLDRC and see what they have to say about those two particular things.
Right. So is there, is there an issue with my motion to?
No, no. I'm just trying to clarify that.
Good.
That's what we're going to do.
Perfect.
George Rektinwall.
My understanding, though, is that you guys need some time. If you're gonna take it to PLDRC, I believe we're looking at outside consultants to go over the effect. We have several scenarios we would be talking about here. So I'm not so sure we would be ready to go to the next PLDRC. It will go to PLDRC as part of the process, but not until we have a lot of work to do to lay that out, to decide, is it, you know, exactly what would be allowed, how would it be written? Remember, a lot of this also, we are trying to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money, which is part of this as well. And that if we don't do it correctly, it could open up a much wider lawsuit. So what we're trying to do is do this thing as, by the state law, and correctly, to minimize any kind of risk. Because I think your attorney started this conversation with, there's gonna be risk, no matter what we do. But I think our job is to minimize it by doing a good job of covering our bases, have it studied, get the values of the various uses that we may or may not allow to have there. And of course, modernizing the zoning category so that there is not some catch-all, hey, if we didn't think of it, you could put it there. You know, so I think we'd be starting with that. So that's all we're really saying is, is this kicks off a process. That's why they allow the moratorium, and that's why they give you up to 12 months, because they recognize that it takes that kind of time to do that kind of analysis and go through the county processes and the state processes.
And I appreciate that.
And I think at the, you know, the moratorium will be at the next meeting, and the doctrine of having the pending ordinance takes effect tonight. So that kind of stops any kind of forward movement, or anybody from sliding anything in here in the next day or two.
Right. And I appreciate that counsel, Mr. Rektinwall. And the moratorium started as soon as we voted on it. I mean, it was instant right then. But, Mr. Dyer, unless, you know, as our legal counsel, you know, you, your job, your job as the county attorney is to protect Volusia County and to protect your council. So unless there's something inherently wrong, unless there's something inherently wrong with putting an exclamation point on this, because I don't think in my motion I said this was, I wanted this at the next PLDRC meeting. I didn't say that. I just want to make sure that there's no confusion, and the public knows, and we know, and we're letting Ormond Beach know, Ormond Beach City Commission know, that we're owning this, and we are saying, this is important. Apparently, it's gonna go through the PLDRC process with the moratorium that we did, but this just, to me, puts an exclamation point on it. Mr. Dyer, does this put us in any situation that you're uncomfortable with?
No, it's good. And I, one thing, just to clarify, because I was, I gave George a shorter version. So Paulo, Clay, based on council's direction already, we have the pending ordinance doctrine in effect now, but we'll have to go to PLDRC with the moratorium and bring it back to this council, correct? Okay. So we will do that as quickly as possible as well. Mr. Kent?
Mr. Chairman, just wanna make a point of order.
Okay. What's your point?
The point is, there was a motion made, but I don't believe that was the second. So we're discussing a motion that's not discussable.
There has not been a second yet.
Correct. So if there's no motion made, I suggest the council continues with proper business order.
Okay. Was there a second to Mr. Kent's motion?
I'll give it a second for purposes of the vote.
Jake Johansson.
Yeah, I, I understand the exclamation point comment, but I'm not sure. I'm curious to know what the difference between what we just voted on and what's being proposed. It sounds like nothing's gonna happen for nine months, and we're gonna do, we're gonna do research on how to navigate the I-2 zoning in the county.
So here's what's going to happen based on your motions. One, pending ordinance doctrine starts today, tonight.
Right.
There's still the moratorium. We are going to bring back a moratorium. That is going to be in the form of an ordinance. That ordinance will go to the PLDRC on their December meeting. It will come back to you for a first hearing on January, and then a second reading on the following January. And that ordinance will be.
The following meeting in January. Yeah.
That ordinance will be backdated to today, and that starts the official nine-month moratorium. The pending ordinance was to bridge the gap between today and when, on the effective date of the moratorium. So there is an action that is going to be asked of this council on the January meetings that starts the moratorium. In the meantime, staff will be reviewing the I-2 zoning district. Once we have a firm draft, we will take that to PLDRC for their recommendation, and then back to this council for its two hearings for the I-2 zoning district. So there are future actions that this council will have to take on the moratorium and the I-2 zoning district.
So does the, does the exclamation point motion permanently limit our ability to use I-2 zoning and unincorporated for things that might already be on there that are acceptable? In somebody's opinion?
Your request to us was to put a moratorium on all the uses in I-2 zoning district for the duration of the moratorium.
I know what my motion is. How about Mr. Kent's motion? Does that permanently?
No, no, it doesn't. It's, it's kind of reiterating what, what, that is the plan that we are going to proceed with based on your previous motion that passed. We're going to start the moratorium process and to start the, to change the I-2 zoning district.
And his motion does the same thing?
Yes. If the motion is to bring, bring it to the PLDRC, yes, we bring both of those items to the PLDRC.
Okay. Clear as mine. Okay. Thank you, Paulo. I guess, Troy, also, I understand the reason for an exclamation point. And one of the reasons why is this is, this whole process is complicated. And I, half the audience still doesn't know exactly what this is gonna do, I think. Maybe some of us still don't understand. I think, I think we are doing the same thing twice, as long as it doesn't mess up what we did the first time, mess up as in slow it down, then I'll vote for this if it goes to a vote. But probably because I've had hours of conversation with, with the legal staff on how we can best do this, not just to protect us on the whole road, but anywhere in Volusia County, that we need to look at them all. I, I think that what you already just did was a good way to go. It protects us. It stopped, it stopped today. Somebody comes in with a permit request or a site plan and says, "I want to build anything" as to, it's, the answer is no. You can't do it. And that, and then it gives us time to create, to go to PLDRC. That was already part of the process that we just approved with the first motion. So I just wanna, I think Attorney Paulo just said it would not, if we vote for Troy's motion, it won't negatively impact the moratorium and the process that we already approved. Okay.
If it's direction of send it to the PLDRC, we were, you know, that was part of the process, but we can do that anyway.
We're just telling the public, this is going. The train has left the station, if I can use a train analogy. David Santiago.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And though I respect the intent of the motion, it's really, no disrespect, it's really a nothing burger. It's a, because what we just did a minute ago, it's gonna go there anyway, it's part of the process. I just want to make sure we preserve the process, that it doesn't get challenged or defeated legally. So what I want us to do is to follow the legal protocols to win whatever we're trying to do. It's a, and again, with all respect, it's like me making a motion, the council saying the sun is gonna come up tomorrow at 6:30 a.m. Well, we know it's gonna come up, right? But we also know that the process that we just voted on a minute ago has to go to the PLDRC by law anyway. So it's going to go that. And I agree that bringing clarification to the public, because you all don't deal with this every day, we deal with this every day here, so we're very familiar with the process. But I'm comfortable where we're at today. The process is, it's an intense process, and I think the comments that have been made today regarding the I-2 zoning, it's better for us to look at this holistically for the entire county. It puts us in proper posture, not only for what you may want out there, but also for the county as a whole. Because many of you have said, "We're here to protect Volusia County." Volusia County is very big. So let us do our job. I think that we're in proper posture right now to move forward, and the legal protocols we need to follow based on his guidance. He's on our team, and his team is on our team. And please, please respect the process. I think we're in good shape right now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Kent.
Thank you, Chairman. And Council, I appreciate your comments. I want you to know, my motion wasn't by any means to muddy this water or make things more difficult for us. But whenever this first motion was made by Mr. Johansson and seconded by myself and voted on the moratorium, it was never explained to the public about the process that was going to take place. So they had no idea. So I simply just wanted to make sure everybody knew, and I guess I could have done it just with a speech, but I wanted you to know how serious I felt about it, that I would make a motion to make sure this goes to PLDRC and starts the process so we can come back to us for two different readings, which by law it's going to have to do. So if it doesn't hurt, Mr. Dyer, if it doesn't hurt to do that, then I would say I'm gonna continue with my motion. If you think that this is going to hurt us in any way, I will gladly withdraw my motion.
No.
Okay. Yeah, so if it doesn't, if it doesn't hurt, I like the, I like the exclamation point.
Perhaps after the months we've been discussing this, an exclamation point is appropriate. My biggest concern, and I think he would have just told you, yes, this is problematic, is that the reason that we're here is that SB 250 was a state preemption. And I think that what we did first was a good process that Mr. Santiago just mentioned to keep us from getting preempted again for doing something that they're gonna tell us. But if it doesn't interfere with that, if we're all good, then let's, let's go. We have a motion and a second by Matt Reinhardt. Any other discussion? This is, the motion is to make sure that we're sending the change of zoning to the PLDRC, starts that process.
Mr. Chair?
Again.
Sure. I think you phrased it wrong. You said the change of zoning. It's the I-2 industrial review.
Yes, so it's, what you directed us to do, we are going to take those items to the PLDRC.
I just wanna make sure. I know it's semantics, Mr. Chair, but I think it's appropriate to make sure, because it's for the entire I-2 classification, what we're looking at.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Two motions have been passed tonight that should allow you to go home and have a happy Thanksgiving and a merry Christmas. That, we're gonna, we're gonna continue the public participation before we move on to the second item. So, yeah, I figured everybody might want to leave. We'll give you a chance to. The bus is here, he just said, so. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. The bus is calling.
Yes. Counsel, while they're clearing out, why don't we just take a two-minute, three-minute recess? 5:35, we'll come back.
I told her, I had, oh, now, Rick, now turn around. Turn around, wait. And my phone just dings. Uh, no. You good? Or you want another one?
I'm going to hang up. I'm going to hear it.
Easy now.
Thank you.
You're going to get me in trouble.
Oh, no. Oh, no, we're good. What happened to your face here? It's like Vegas.
Yeah.
Nine o'clock.
Enjoy your turkey.
Is anybody concerned with that?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Oh.
She's talking to Matt Davis.
I told her, I had, oh, now, Rick, now turn around. Turn around, wait. And my phone just dings. Uh, no. You good? Or you want another one?
I'm going to hang up.
I'm going to hear it.
Easy now.
Thank you.
You're going to get me in trouble.
Oh, no. Oh, no, we're good. What happened to your face here? It's like Vegas.
Yeah.
We're going to cruise through. Nine o'clock.
Enjoy your turkey.
Is anybody concerned with that?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Oh.
I told her, I had, oh, now, Rick, now turn around. Turn around, wait. And my phone just dings. Uh, no. You good? Or you want another one?
I'm going to hang up.
I'm going to hear it.
Easy now.
Thank you.
You're going to get me in trouble.
Oh, no. Oh, no, we're good. What happened to your face here? It's like Vegas.
Yeah.
We're going to cruise through.
Nine o'clock.
Enjoy your turkey.
Is anybody concerned with that?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Oh.
I told her, I had, oh, now, Rick, now turn around. Turn around, wait. And my phone just dings. Uh, no. You good? Or you want another one?
I'm going to hang up.
I'm going to hear it.
Easy now.
Thank you.
You're going to get me in trouble.
Oh, no. Oh, no, we're good. What happened to your face here? It's like Vegas.
Yeah.
We're going to cruise through.
Nine o'clock.
Enjoy your turkey.
Is anybody concerned with that?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Oh.
I told her, I had, oh, now, Rick, now turn around. Turn around, wait. And my phone just dings. Uh, no. You good? Or you want another one?
I'm going to hang up.
I'm going to hear it.
Easy now.
Thank you.
You're going to get me in trouble.
Oh, no. Oh, no, we're good. What happened to your face here? It's like Vegas.
Yeah.
We're going to cruise through.
Nine o'clock.
Enjoy your turkey.
Is anybody concerned with that?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Oh.
I told her, I had, oh, now, Rick, now turn around. Turn around, wait. And my phone just dings. Uh, no. You good? Or you want another one?
I'm going to hang up.
I'm going to hear it.
Easy now.
Thank you.
You're going to get me in trouble.
Oh, no.
Oh, no, we're good. What happened to your face here? It's like Vegas.
Yeah.
We're going to cruise through.
Nine o'clock.
Enjoy your turkey.
Is anybody concerned with that?
I don't know.
Yeah.
More sex offenses, no committing of the act. Raise your hand. I would expect everyone here to raise their hand right now. When I got out of prison, I had nowhere to go. I would have been in the woods. You're leading people to commit suicide. They have already committed a crime that they want to die for. You put the people in the woods, the police cannot go in there. How? You want to send your police officers into the woods in the middle of the night? Or the probation officers? It's not just about us. See, we all should have raised our hand, and this is why. We are all one. We're on the same side. This is not different sides. We all want to stop it. The people that committed the offenses as well. We are protectors. Someone does that, it'll never happen again. Only 5% reoffend. That to me shows 95% of the offenses are a one-time thing. It's not going to happen again. People that do that, they protect. There's a community, and there's a team being built, and it needs to be continued to build. We need more resources. We need more people to stand up and unite together so that we can teach each other, because it takes one to help one. More people that have committed an offense need to be raised up to help the other people going into that situation. You can't just have a regular counselor. Can't just have a normal situation. That's why you have ITM and all these other things. There has to be stronger unity. We are not a separated people. Thank you very much.
John Pasternak, followed by Sean O'Neill.
Good afternoon, council and neighbors, friends. My name is John Pasternak. I live here locally on Halifax Drive. I don't know how much of you guys are aware, but we've been having some pretty severe flooding issues out there. I haven't been in the area for as long as some of these issues have been going on, and was recently made aware that there was actually a study conducted back in 2009 to find out what's the problem, what can be done about it. The actual study was to evaluate and identify stormwater infrastructure deficiencies with primary goal of reducing flooding and improving water quality. So this is a study that was done 14 years ago to find out what specifically can be done. And there were at least six things that were identified that would take care of our specific area. It was identified as a B-21 area. And of those six things, none have been done. And I've got a response back. I'm on an email chain where Benjamin Bartlett basically said, "There's no money for that. We got to find out where to get the money from." We had a half a cent added to this, and basically it wasn't important, I think, is really at the end of it, or there wasn't enough money to be done. This particular study was the B-21 watershed management plan. It was by Environmental Consulting and Technology Incorporated Group. So I have a couple of questions about that. I don't expect anyone to have the answers for me today, but I'm hoping someone could get back to me. I'd like to know how much that cost the county, taxpayers of the county, to have that study done, which showed there were things that could be done, and then those things weren't done, which has caused major flooding to a lot of people. We lost a lot of property there. People were underwater. There are people who still aren't back in their homes currently. It didn't identify numerous infrastructure deficiencies along with maintenance requirements that hadn't been done. I don't have the time here to go through the specifics, obviously, but I'm just, I got a couple of questions additionally. You know, how do we find the county, state, or federal funds to pay for things like this? If we've got the money to do the study to find out what are the problems, what's the point of doing a study if we can't get the actual problem taken care of? Seems, you know, kind of silly to me. I mean, at the time, these things would have cost about $1.3 million to do in 2009. It's probably going to cost twice that to get these things done. So it seems like they're even more unattainable unless the budget has increased by 100% since I think it's time to find the money for these projects without raising our property taxes. And I don't propose to have all the solutions or even all the questions, but I'd like to start this process so we're not doing things like this in the future. At the beginning of the meeting, we talked about possibly a study for what we were talking about there. We don't want that to be pointless, like this study.
Thank you, sir.
I'd say thank you, but for this issue, I can't thank you.
Okay. Sean O'Neill, followed by Sean Holly.
Good evening, council. My name is Sean O'Neill. I'm a longtime resident here in beautiful Volusia County. I live in the unincorporated area of Daytona Beach, and I come here today as a concerned registered citizen who needs to plead earnestly for you to vote not in favor of the proposed sex offender ordinance that would extend residency restriction in the unincorporated parts of this county from 1,000 feet to 1,500 feet or more. I strongly believe this residency restriction would bring in about dire consequences and more hardship to the registered citizens who reside within Volusia County. It is already difficult to obtain a job with the stigma that comes with this type of prior offenses. I am a resident of one of the properties that would be affected by this ordinance, and I would like to say that we are not monsters, just human beings who most have made an immoral choice in life that was, has affected the community, as with any unlawful acts. There are many good-natured people who would be affected by this proposed ordinance. I myself understand the need for safety and security within our communities, though I strongly feel that this is not the resolution to implement a safer environment for our beautiful county. I also plead for you to vote not in favor of the charging monetary fees for registration and reregistration proposal, because many registrants may not be able to afford these fees, especially having to register any type of motor vehicle for themselves and anyone else living within the residence. Even if they do not own a vehicle themselves, they have to register every motorized vehicle every time a new citizen, registered or not, moves in and owns or gets rid of the vehicle. The registrant has to take time away from work if they are fortunate enough to have a job. They have to go to the sheriff's department and reregister the new information for their registration obligation. This certainly would be costly to all registered citizens and would prompt incarceration for the registrants who could not afford these fees. There is much more that I could be said. As we all know, I worry, as do many, that this would have a domino effect and would further cause hardship to registered civilians and their family and friends that believe in them. So I implore for your opposing consideration about these proposed ordinances, because the repercussions that these ordinances would incur are difficulties with improvement of successful interaction and liberties. I enjoy the right to be civilized every day in our engaging community. Please help me remain in doing so. I thank you for your valuable time in this important matter.
Sean Holly. Ricky Petty. And if none of them are here, that concludes our public participation for the beginning of this meeting. And because we took so long with taking care of this first important item, I'd like to move ahead. We'll come back, council, if you allow, to the consent agenda. We've had a gentleman waiting here for a proclamation to present to Dr. Roy A. Walters. If nobody has any objection, we'll proceed with that. Representative of Dr. Walters here? Just come on down to the front. Don't worry. Yeah, I'm not going to make you all do a speech, but... Why not? Come on down, and I'll read the proclamation to you, and then we'll take a couple of pictures. It says, "Whereas, as a physicist, historical preservationist, environmentalist, and community volunteer, Roy A. Walters, Ph.D., 1941 to 2023, wore many hats, and he wore them well. And whereas, Dr. Walters was a dedicated volunteer with the River-to-Sea Transportation Planning Organization, serving on the Bicycle-Pedestrian Advisory Committee for decades and leading rides for the TPO's bicycle events. And whereas, he was also a longtime member and treasurer of the Enterprise Preservation Society, working hundreds of hours on the massive relocation and restoration of a 1936 Enterprise School, now the Enterprise Museum. In fact, he and his wife Sandy even donated the land the museum occupies. And whereas, as a member of the Friends of Thornby, Dr. Walters was instrumental in the preservation of the historic Thornby property and the ultimate creation of Thornby Park in 2012. And whereas, he also volunteered for Volusia County's Adopt-A-Trail Program at Hickory Bluff Preserve, was one of the first volunteers to monitor and collect monofilament fishing lines from recycling at boat launches, and worked with Volusia County Environmental Management Staff to eradicate giant reeds by hand from waterfront property on Stone Island. And whereas, an accomplished musician, Dr. Walters played the trumpet with a Daytona State College Community Symphonic Band for years. Now, therefore, we, the county council of Volusia County, Florida, do hereby proclaim November 21st, 2023, as Dr. Roy A. Walters' Day. Congratulations to you all."
I actually went to Enterprise Elementary. I did, I did, yeah. It was Red Schools, right? It was, yeah.
Oh, don't go yet. Why don't you all back up there and face this away, and the chair's joining you. Okay. All right, county council, a big step to your right, and y'all up front, squish in County council, another big step to your right, and y'all take a big step to your right, too. Bottom row, step to your right. Okay, this is good. Okay. I'm ready, ready. Let me take one more. Whoops. There. One more. All done. Thank you. Oh, oh, wait, can you go back? We have another photographer. Can you all pose again? Okay. Is that good?
Mark, do you know Dr. Walters? I'm sorry? Did you know Dr. Walters?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion to approve that resolution, and a second. So if this passes, you'll get a signed copy of that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Shouldn't we have done that in a kind of different order?
Yeah, well, yeah.
All right.
Okay, it's 6 o'clock. Why don't we take care of the consent agenda, and we'll take a brief break. Does any council member have an item on the consent agenda that they would like to pull for a vote or a comment?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the entire consent agenda?
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda by David Santiago, and a second was by Councilman Reinhardt. And we have a member of the public who wanted to speak to the consent agenda, item 1F,
Thank you, council, for briefly humor me. I know this is, this particular item is uncontroversial, and I do support it. I just want to come up and say, this is a perfect example of government working, especially when you be fiscal responsible, you're able to give this grant of $8,000 and then also match it without having to go into debt. And I would like to thank Lucinda Coley, the library director. She's been really welcoming us on the library advisory board, and I do appreciate her and her great effort in leading all the libraries. And this particular library is one of the crown jewels of our library system. I personally had a tour of it, and I know Matt also visited that library recently because of the archive dedication. I'm trying to think of it. Anyway, it's a very lovely library. I would not like, I would love to see this flood mitigation grant be approved so that we will never have to, what happened to the other library in DeBury. But we'll talk about that later. But again, like I said, support it, and I hope you approve it. Thank you. Bye.
Okay, if there was no questions or debate on the consent agenda, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the consent agenda is passed 5 to 0. Item 2 has been completed.
Mr. Chairman, we're going to take our recess?
Yeah, we will take the 6 o'clock recess at 6:03 and be back at 6:30.
Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in five minutes.
Okay, we will resume the meeting. We're done with the consent agenda, done with item two. We'll proceed to item three, the request of financial support from Clash Endurance for the fifth annual Clash Endurance Sports Festival.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll start and I'll ask the Clash folks to come up here. Actually, it's now going to be the fifth year, so there's been a movement going on over in Daytona, and we've been getting a national event that has been going on that we'll hear about here in a minute. This event has grown over time. I know a lot of you are familiar with triathlons, and we have one that's been now in its fifth year here. It's growing like a lot of events that have come here in the past. It's growing into more and more of a citywide event and not just a race. It's a weekend experience, so people are coming in. And so what is common with the bigger sporting events is especially one like this that's really takes place from the beach all the way to the land, you know, it's more and more involving the community. And I think that's they're here today to ask a little bit about tell us a little bit about how they're involved and ask, I think, for a little bit more community involvement. So with that, I'm going to give it over to the Clash.
Good evening. My name is Andre Lepar. I'm COO with Clash Endurance, esteemed members of the council. Thank you for your time this evening. We are here. I think you have the documentation in front of you. We are seeking some support for our event. We are in the fifth year, currently growing our event year over year with both our event offerings and our athlete count as well as the states represented and the folks that we're bringing from out of the region, out of the state to obviously participate with heads in beds, but also awareness and enjoyment for the community of Volusia County, which we heard from the public remarks. We are outdoor-based fitness activities, which are the type of visitors I think we want in the county. We have demographic studies from USA Triathlon, which is the governing body for the sport. These are tend to be higher net worth individuals, families. They are well-seasoned travelers who tend to stay for two, three, four nights, and the idea is to get them to acclimate to Volusia County. And all we have to offer here between the beaches, the forests, and just the hospitality that the region has to offer to continue to build on the event's success that we've had. We have been designated for 2023 as the USA Triathlon Long Course National Championship. So what that means is athletes have to come here from other parts of the US to qualify. These are amateur athletes, so you know, very enthusiastic hobbyists. They have the opportunity to qualify here to go to the Long Course Triathlon World Championships, which in 2024 are being held in Townsville, Australia. Our event growth, you can see some of the numbers in the presentation. We did include a heat map from where all the registrations were coming, 2022 versus 2023. So you can see we've gotten a drastically larger impact from athletes coming out of the region farther from the East Coast, Chicago. We have Southern California represented. We also put in the bid for being the host venue for the 2024 USA Triathlon Long Course National Championship, which we were awarded just about one month ago. So we're continuing to build on the successes that we've had, and that's why we're for the council to continue to build on the success that we've had here in Daytona. I'll leave you with one anecdote with which we've done in our Homestead Miami event. We just recently were awarded, we put in a joint bid with USA Triathlon to host the America's Triathlon Championship, which that includes elites, juniors, and para-athletes from all the Pan-American nations. So Canada, US, Mexico, all the way down through Argentina. And that event will carry valuable qualifying points, points towards the 2024 Paris Olympics, as well as the final qualifying stop for the 2024 Paralympics for the paratrope athletes. We'd love to bring something like that to Daytona. The calendar with the Olympics being in July of '24 doesn't work out, but as you all know, the US is hosting the 2028 Games in Los Angeles. And as part of that, the host nation- The calendar with the Olympics being in July of '24 doesn't work out, but as you all know, the US is hosting the 2028 Games in Los Angeles, and as part of that, the host nation has to do certain things to comply with international standards, race director certification, race official certification, so there's a number of events that we want to continue to expand with our footprint here in Daytona.
Counsel, do you have any questions for the presenter?
I do.
Okay, Councilman Santiago.
Thank you, thank you for being here today. Can you give me a little bit more background on where you currently do events in the state of Florida?
Yes, so we have the Daytona, Clash Daytona, which is based out of the Speedway. Our bike portion for the long course actually comes out on US 92 to just east of the land here, we turn around, head back, so we utilize that beautiful quiet stretch of road through the Tiger Bay Forest. We operate the Daytona Beach Half Marathon and 5K, which is in February, the week before Speed Weeks, and then we have added, three years ago, we have the Homestead Miami Triathlon Events, which are out of the Homestead Speedway, about 40 minutes south of Miami, and we are currently exploring some options. One of the largest growing segments within the cycling space is something known as gravel cycling, and those of you who aren't familiar, it's sort of the sweet spot between mountain biking and road biking, looks like a road bike, but it has fatter tires, so people can ride gravel roads, dirt trails. They don't have to worry about getting hit by cars on busy roadways, they don't have to worry about getting their teeth knocked out on crazy mountain bike trails with rocks and boulders. As you may be familiar with, there's a ton of those trails in the Tiger Bay State Forest, so we are looking to expand our event offering here in the west side of the county.
So in the state of Florida, basically Homestead and Volusia?
Yes. One thing that is unique about our events, our event here in Daytona, we have Friday evening, we have a Jingle Jog 5K through the Magic of Lights Drive-Thru Display, which has will have about 1,500 people in that event. We have two separate Sprint Triathlons on property Saturday, we have a kids' triathlon, we are doing some bike-only races on the Speedway Saturday afternoon, and then Sunday afternoon, Sunday morning, is the USA Triathlon Long Course National Championship. So different from other events of this nature, typically a marathon, a half marathon, a bike event, a Fondo, are one event on one day. We offer a multitude of events, and we're able to house a number of those events on Speedway property, so we can bring more people to the region, offer something for the husbands, wives, the kids of the competitors, which again is bringing more heads to beds in the region, and only utilizing one day of impacts on local roadways. So that's how we are different from other events.
One other follow-up, any other states that you're doing this in?
We have previously done events that were televised up in Watkins Glen at Speedway in northern New York, and we did do an event last year at the Atlanta, Road Atlanta Speedway. They have some mountain bike trails adjacent to their Speedway, but we want to really focus on building these two events as the marquee triathlon events that we have in our portfolio.
I know I said one last, Mr. Chair, but can you, can you share with us, what's your vision in the long-term prospects of what you're doing here?
I would love to establish Daytona in this venue as one of the marquee triathlon events on the calendar, which we are growing to that currently with the projections we have on forecasted athlete growth. Example, I'll give you USA Triathlon, their multi-sport national championship, which is shorter distance triathlon, has been held for the previous three or four years in Milwaukee. That's an athlete, athlete count of 5,000 athletes over a multitude of events in the weekend. It's been a staple on most of those athletes' calendars that are all traveling in from a myriad of states, staying locally, so we want to continue to build this event as a marquee event in the county and in the Daytona region that we can continue to bring athletes in and showcase everything that we have to offer here.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Kent.
Thank you, Chairman. First of all, let me just start and say, I love the healthy aspect of this. I'm pleased that, yeah, that, you know, you all have an event that focuses on health, and I mean, some of this is, all of it actually, in my opinion, is like high endurance, like, you know, this is, this is not, you know, something you just go out and try. Like you said, these are are serious, not professionals, but yeah, serious hobbyists, I think is what he, what he mentioned. So I just have a few questions. Is Clash Endurance, are you all a nonprofit?
No, we are a for-profit company, we do have nonprofits that we work in with various markets, NASCAR Foundation is our local non-charity partner, and then we do work with a number of smaller charity groups for volunteers, we do donations. Obviously, these events take an extraordinary amount of manpower to pull off, so I think that's a common model in the large sports business to utilize volunteer groups.
So you all are a for-profit company, and I'm, I get that, and I got to tell you, I'm okay with that, you know, you got a business to make money, you know, make, make money. Staff, you can help me with this, there were, there was supplemental work, paperwork that was sent to us, is the ask by Clash Endurance, is it for taxpayer dollars, is it for $127,473.30, or is it for $74,306.15? What's the ask? Because there's, there's original, the reason I ask is, on the first, on the first paperwork that we received, lifeguards and water safety, you know, 250, 8,718, 7,500, and then 5,000. For motos, for people to go around and capture the photos of the people participating, $9,430. For the cones, traffic management, we're at $60,337. For someone to time it, we're at $27,597.15. And then for all of the, you know, on top of it, the volunteers they're going to have, they're asking us to pay their volunteers as well, and, and that was 1,400, 3,600, 2,500, and then 1,000, for a total of 127,473.30. And then on the supplemental page that we received, when I download it again, it looks like they're asking for the lifeguards and water safety piece and the cones of 60,337, for a total of 74,306.15. So what, what's the ask? Is it the 127, or is it the 74,000?
The 74, sorry, we wanted to clarify, that, that was the supplemental piece that had gone in, they, we were asked to submit some of our larger expenses, which we did.
I appreciate that.
The ones that we're appreciating support for are purely tied to athlete safety. It is a large number for cones and traffic control management. We use a company called All American Barricades, they have facilities in Orlando, Fort Lauderdale, and Miami, I've worked with Ruben, the owner, on 15 years, and they are, traffic control for events of this nature are very dynamic, traffic control for construction projects are, you lay out barrels, you lay out cones, if they're late, that's okay, the construction guys show up when they do, but this is a very dynamic, we have a, the lead riders can be riding at 25, 30 miles an hour, they are coming toward the intersection whether the police and the cones are there or not, which is why we use one of the best in the business to ensure that athletes that do come to our community feel safe, they can engage, and know that if they're coming here, they're going to have an amazing experience.
Thank you for that, and, and I appreciate that you use the term best in the business, I use that from time to time with a couple staff members here. But I'm, my, it sort of helped answer my next question, which was, you know, so this, this ask is for us, the taxpayers, to pay the cones and to pay for the lifeguards and water safety, because if it was the original one, which was the lifeguards and water safety, the motos, the cones, the timing, the volunteer cost, my question was going to be, what does Clash Endurance pay for? If, if, if the government is paying for all of that, what, what does Clash Endurance pay for? But now it's kind of cleared up for me of what you all are going to pay for, there's some other things that you all are going to take care of.
Yes, yeah, we, we pay, we bring in USA Triathlon race officials, obviously we have professional event staff, we are contracting barricades, we're renting the Speedway, t-shirts for the athletes, medals, athlete food, we contract with EMS services, massage, all, yeah, there's, there's a myriad of other items, marketing dollars, content creation.
Okay. And, and Councilman Santiago, I was going to ask the exact same question, so I'm glad you did, you know, what other events do you have, and where do they take place? And I guess the only thing I would add to that is, do those communities, I guess the only other one in Florida is down in Miami, does, does Miami County do, or Dade County, do they, do they pitch in and pay for this business?
Yeah, for portions of it, and we are actually, Cassie was actually diligently working in the back of the room on an application for the local TDC that we're working with down in Homestead Miami.
Thank you, I, just, just two more questions, I believe. What is the average, or what is the cost for your participants? You know, you've got three different days, you've got several different events, what do they have to pay to participate? Because I think we're at like 4,000, although when I ran the numbers, I think it was like 3,850 participants, we'll say 4,000, close to it. What do they pay to participate in this?
It's a sliding scale, depends on the event. The Jingle Jog 5K started, I think early registration was $35, up to, I think we're 50 now, runs through the Magic of Lights, which a typical car to run, to drive through there is $35, they're getting their t-shirts, their medals with that. The Sprint Triathlon runs from, I think, $100 to 135 on the higher end, that's inclusive of all registration platform fees that, you know, that are paid like a Ticketmaster. The longer distance with USA Triathlon, there are some fees that we have to cover with them as part of the licensing to be sanctioned as the national championship. Those entries started at 275, and they run, I think we're at late entries, right, about 400 now. We do have various discount codes that we work with different clubs and officials, as well as local businesses, so.
So I've heard anywhere from $35 for some events, up to $400 for late registrations.
Correct, and it, yeah, for me to give you, one average sales price across the board would be, it'd be.
Right, and I was just, I was running just some real basic math, with 4,000 participants, that's 100 bucks a person, I was like, $400,000 for Clash Endurance, you know, in a, in a three-day event, but it sounds like it could be, it could be more than that. And again, I'm, I'm happy about that, but you see, the, the issue I do have is that this is an ask for public money.
Yes, understood.
Yep, so I have, I have one more question for you, but Counsel, this is my only concern with this, is that, you know, this is, these are public dollars that we have been talking about being fiscally conservative with, and, you know, cutting back and tightening our belt, and this answer is going to help me with a yes or no, just so you know. I was having a fantastic impromptu meeting with two constituents of mine mid-afternoon today. They are elderly, sweet people, they are of course on a fixed income, they have a nest of money that they have saved, and with inflation last year at 9.06%, you know, they're not immune to it, they feel it like everybody else. And I like having good answers when people ask me tough questions, and I need a good answer to this husband and wife who, their money is dwindling, they didn't say it, but I know they're concerned about outliving their savings from a lifetime of work, and what do I say to them when they say, how is giving away our tax dollars to a for-profit company helping us as Volusia County residents, who at times, I believe, because, you know, we chatted about this a little bit, and I don't think it's because they're low on money, but they do it sometimes, but they have tin fish for meals, you know? And, you know, how, how is what we're, if we were to give you this money today, how is it helping our residents of Volusia County to give their money to a for-profit to make, for the for-profit company to make money? I, I just need a good answer to give them, and that honestly could sway my opinion here today.
Yes, and 100% valid, and I understand the question and the concern, and by all means, that's, you're representing your constituents correctly. As we all know, we're coming out of COVID, the event space has been rocked, and I liken it to a wildfire, where it cleaned out all the underbrush, the big trees are still there, the New York City marathons, the Boston's of the world, but it created opportunity for new growth. We're trying to capitalize on that growth to build an event here that the community can count on year after year, that will fill the hotels, will fill the restaurants, will have a positive impact, you know, working with some of the professional athletes we're already working with, the International Triathlon Union for our Miami event, to do some meet and greets with some of the potential and future Olympians that will host there at local schools, so we want to continue to build that, and look, you know everyone's being squeezed from top to bottom, our margins are razor-thin, we're not trying to come here and make a quick buck, we do want to produce a standing event with a good relationship with the community, and that's essentially why we're here seeking support.
And I, thank, thank you, I appreciate that, and I'll end with how I started, I, I love the idea of this because it's getting, helping people stay healthy, and get healthy, and participate, and act, be active, active, and see what we have in this beautiful, you know, county of ours, and from a business standpoint, it's brilliant, I love it, I absolutely love it, you know, for, for you all, I'm just, I'm on the fence about, you know, the, the taxpayer dollar piece.
Sorry, if I might just add one more thing that Andre was speaking to earlier when you asked about whether we were nonprofit or for-profit, and the fact that even though we are for-profit, we do work with nonprofits, as you saw, we do pay out a substantial amount to local people, including like local rowing clubs, including Volusia Gives, we've worked with quite a lot, so we do work with those local charitable organizations, as well as NASCAR Foundation, we have partnered this year quite a bit with Jeep Beach as well, so that is a great answer to those people who are concerned, is not only are we bringing these people into the county, but by us bringing those people into the county, we are then able to give back to the local charities and the local organizations.
And just so that I'm clear, because you said you all give a substantial amount to those volunteer groups, these are the numbers I have in front of me. Timoco Christian Church will receive $1,470, Emery Riddle will receive $3,600, Daytona Beach Broncos will receive $2,520, and Halifax Rowing Association will receive $1,050. So there are four there, maybe around $8,000 is what I'm seeing here.
Right, so I think that that's more than most organizations do give back to the community, I'd love to look into that and get you some better answers.
Gotcha.
We don't have numbers on there for what we're doing with NASCAR Foundation, that's, that's separate, we did strike a partnership this year with Florida Bicycle Association, which is a nonprofit statewide advocacy group to work on bicycle safety and advocacy for all of our events, so we're trying on a number of different fronts to advance the health and wellness in the community, and not just trying to sit here and turn a profit and ask for free taxpayer dollars.
Right, yeah, and I hope you don't think that's what I said here.
No, no, no.
These are, these are questions that I've got to tell you, you know, I, I believe the voters in Volusia County are the smartest, and they don't get it wrong, so, you know, I've, I've got some very astute individuals that I speak with, and they're going to, they're going to pepper me with this, I, I know I'm going to be asked, hold on a second, you know, I've listened to you, Councilman Kent, up there, you know, holding, holding the reins tight on money, and what's going on here? You know, you're giving, you're giving our, our money away, you know, because they'll be quick to tell me it's their money, and they're right. You're giving our money away to a for-profit who's, you know, here making X amount of money, you know, type of thing, and I just like to have a good answer for them, that's all, I like to be able to say, hey, you know, this is, this is it. We talk up here a lot about ROI, return on investment, you know, and what is that return on investment? And I, I'm not saying I can't be swayed, because I haven't heard from several other council members, but I may, thanks.
No, and all valid points, and we have a proven track record of growth year over year, and we want to continue that growth curve, and sometimes growth requires some support, and that's why we're in front of the council this evening.
Thank you, we're still in the, the question asking mode, we don't have a, a motion yet. Matt, I know you have a question for Councilman Reinhardt, and then Councilman Johansson, you have questions as well? Okay, go ahead, Matt.
Thank you, Chair. Real quick, you mentioned Homestead Miami, how long have you been in that area?
This will be our third year operating.
Third year there, fifth year here. I like the idea, I guess I started thinking, you know, it takes money to make money sometimes, I guess is the thought that's gone in my head, and when you bring in businesses, we do it for our own advertising, we spend money in order to bring in people for advertising wise, you know, you spend money to make money type thing. I would imagine, you mentioned Boston Marathon, you know, and these events that have taken place over the years, and how, sorry, how COVID had affected that negatively, but it's back, you know, they're, and it's back to me, even, well, not even stronger, but it's back. But I imagine they started going through the same process when they wanted to organize that event. You know, they, they probably went to their city, I don't know, I'm assuming here, so I probably won't, and I'm, I'm not with a question, though. Safety record, there was a couple events that are taking place, and of course, safety-wise, I know that you guys contracted with EMS, you have that arrangement with the sheriff's office for security and whatnot, how's your safety record with respect to, because accidents happen, you know, it, these are sporting events, they do happen, so, and how quick to respond, I guess, and?
Yeah, so we work with Daytona Beach Police Department, VCSO, who's at some, some intersection with FHP, we have Volusia County EMS, and obviously working with ICE staff, and all that they have on property. Yes, every, every year, we've had probably two, three, four bike crashes, we have not We have not had any major catastrophes or transports at our events. Our water safety, being inside Lakewood, inside Daytona International Speedway, it's a very controllable body of water, which takes away a lot of the, you know, anxiety of first-time athletes coming to the area. So our safety record has been very good. And part of the reason with our, aside from the long course nationals coming off property, all the other events are contained within Daytona International Speedway, so we're not worried about car-on-bike traffic or any of the typical issues that arise at events of this nature, because we're contained on private property.
Okay. Another question you had, you talked about helping other charities, and you mentioned Jeep Beach, very near and dear to me. I mean, that is huge to me. So I was kind of curious, you said that you could possibly find out the numbers for, what was the other charity?
NASCAR Foundation.
NASCAR Foundation. Also, I'm kind of curious about the Jeep Beach part, because I know that they, they help so many. Jeep Beach is just one funnel, if you will, to go to, to other agencies as well.
They won't let me bring my Bronco to Jeep Beach, by the way.
No, no.
I tried.
Because I told them not to. The map itself was very impactful, and that was one of the things that caught my attention just from last year to this year, and how many more people are coming in. And then I started looking at some of the numbers. 28% partner hotel within room block, 40% outside hotels. What is, where's the outside hotels?
So outside hotels, outside hotels are any of the hotels that are not currently in our room block. So what we do is we contract with, with Fairfield and then Suites at One Daytona, as well as the Daytona, as well as the Bahama House. Those are like our partner hotels.
So they're within the city?
Yep. And then we work with the CVB, and we have the CVB's link on our website to make sure that if our blocks are full, people still have access to nowhere else and they can stay.
Okay, good.
And as you may know, it's getting harder and harder to track where everyone is staying.
That's true.
With the VRBOs and the Airbnbs and it.
Yeah, that's hard to do. That's hard to do.
All we can prove concretely is our registration data and where people are coming from. And, you know, if, if they are coming from California or Denver, we can very concretely say that they are staying in hotels locally.
Do you have obstacles with respect to permitting for the city? Because I know some of the events take place in the city of Daytona.
Yeah, and luckily the city's been great. Darren Greer with Traffic Control, Steve Catalano was here earlier. Yeah, they're back here. Jeff Wingard. They're all very good entities to work with, and I think we've worked with them on a number of years now that we kind of have the course whittled down to, you know, where we're, I don't want to say nitpicking, but we have the major bugs worked out, and it's a fairly efficient system. I think they would concur the same if they're standing behind me.
I was looking through my notes to see if any of the questions, the other ones were already answered with respect of where else you're at. The Miami, that's why I expanded on the question of how long have you been in Miami? And then, so there's Miami, Homestead, and then us, and then where else, I'm sorry?
And then we do have the Daytona Beach Half Marathon, and we are looking at expanding out of state again. We did Watkins Glen up at the Speedway in Northern New York.
That was a one-time deal?
One-time deal. It's, it's a tough market. You can only get so many weekends a year at this Speedway that are swimmable in those lakes from temperature, and then only so many weekends that the track is available. So for a number of reasons, and then we are looking, as I said, to expand into the gravel cycling scene, which large gravel races, the biggest one is the Unbound Gravel in Kansas. So 5,000-person ride in Little Emporia, Kansas, and 5,000 people descend on that town in June to just ride up and down the dirt roads of the Flint Hills of Kansas. I don't know that we have exactly that type of terrain here, but I think some that we can emulate on a much smaller scale here utilizing some of the space in Tiger Bay.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Councilman Johansson.
Thank you, Chairman. You mentioned you have some viewing from TV stations. Do we have contracts with these TV stations right now?
We have previously had contracts for those and broadcasts both on NBC, on the big global channel on New Year's Day for our Daytona event. We have had broadcasts on FS1 and FS2. We are not hosting a professional race in Daytona this year. Majority of the reason being we, with the designation to be the Long Course National Championship, we wanted to focus our resources on the age group athlete or the, as I call them, the, the very enthusiastic hobbyists and not the professional sport. And once we get our footing under us with that event this year, we may expand and re-televised Daytona for 2024. And we are currently in talks to do that for our Miami event, reason being with it being a qualifying event towards the Paris Olympics, there'll be some very telling stories that will come out of that, both for US athletes as well as all Pan-Amer- Pan-American countries chasing valuable points towards the Games.
So these TV ratings and sustained viewers, that's not going to help us this year?
No, those were for reference, but I, those are something we are exploring for the future here in Daytona, and obviously we have a very sizable presence in online, both in social media, YouTube content, which we will be doing that this year in Daytona as well.
We, I was just going to note on the, kind of the digital aspect that he's talking about, the digital broadcasting, we do have some partnerships that we're working on not only kind of highlighting our Redline Relay, which would be the cycling race that Andre talked about earlier, but also highlighting three women. It's called Women Without Limits, and that is going to highlight three women who are coming to our race that are very successful professionals, one of which is a four-time gold medal Olympic swimmer, Brooke Bennett. And so we are still doing programs this year, just because we're doing a pro race. They just happen to be that these ones will be digitally broadcast rather than NBC or FS1.
Got it. Maybe a question for staff, is this something that the Halifax Advertising Authority can get involved with, or is it too? Not really.
The answer is yes, and I think they are in some degree, yes, to ask.
Halifax Advertising Authority?
Yes, they do assist us with marketing funds, but those funds can only be used for marketing, and there is a cap on that. So we have gone to them, and we were approved for funds for Daytona for 2023. And so, yes, they have assisted us with that. That's part of our work with the CVB and why we share all of the CVB's information about Daytona at our events as well as on our website.
Okay. How does our community participate? Can we go watch these events for free?
Yes, they are free to the public to come watch. The Jingle Jog that we have that runs through Christmas lights, that's largely a local draw community base. We do have family pricing. Kids under eight are free. Again, it's a great way for people to go through two miles worth of Christmas lights. If you didn't know, the largest drive-through Christmas light display in the state of Florida is right here in Daytona. So we really try and lean into that as a nice kickoff. And for the serious athletes that are racing on Sunday, it's a nice way for them to engage their entire family, and we have something to offer for all of them, which again encourages them to stay for one or two extra nights in the region.
And just one last question or a series of questions, I guess, is, these are all held at racetracks, obviously. So does Brazelton and, and Homestead, or whatever the town is next to Homestead? And Watkins Glen, do they put money, do they pay $75,000 to help or?
So I won't get, I guess, into specific numbers. We did have some support from Watkins Glen, and the reason being we did that as a televised event on Fox Sports One and Fox Sports Two. We had 12 one-hour show airings of that event, which I think we provided them good return on investment for the eyeballs that were viewed. And that was done as a different type of event content. It wasn't purely, hey, here's the race, this is the leader, this person's in second place, third place is catching up. It was not race coverage. It was more done as a travel docu-series where we interviewed some of the amateur athletes, some of the professional athletes. We highlighted Watkins Glen Falls, the wineries. It was much more of a travel piece than it was a race highlight show. And we found that that really ticked the box for the county up there. And again, we can provide those numbers to you. We didn't include them as it's a slightly different product.
Got it. We won't benefit for anything of that nature here, or possibly?
No, definitely possibly, as Cassie mentioned, the three women without limits that we're featuring. We have Shannon Spake, who is a both NASCAR and Fox NFL reporter, Brooke Bennett, who's a four-time Olympic medalist, and Joy McAdams, who's a, a social influencer, a TEDx speaker. We also, I'm from up north, sorry, I'm the Yankee in the room. Any hockey fans here? We have the former captain of the Boston Bruins, Den Ochara. He's a, basically, he's Mr. Boston when it comes to hockey.
Who, Bobby Orr?
No, no, he, I'm sure he knows Bobby Orr, but now retired, a multi-time NHL All-Star, tallest man ever to play in the NHL. He's racing with us in his first triathlon here. So we already have been engaging with Sports Illustrated ESPN to do some pieces. He ran Boston Marathon and New York City Marathon, and obviously the, the coverage that he got after the event for how he finished was broadcast far and wide, and we have full plans to do that here as well. So we do have a full-blown media plan to get news out about our event, because what we broadcast to share our event far and wide obviously helps you all as well with the county and the city.
So I, I think, I think I'll wait till debate. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have a question yet. I was hoping we would get a motion so we can go into debate, but I know that Ms. Councilman Santiago has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I was approaching this from, well, I came into this approaching it from a ROI, right? Troy was saying, and making, you know, the, the case, I love the event, by the way, let me first say that. I'd love to see it grow in Volusia County, too. And so I honed in on the, the, the media stuff as Jake did over there, and, you know, that lured me in a little bit to say, okay, well, maybe I can turn this into a, a good investment for Volusia County for marketing purposes, to get people to make awareness on Volusia County, to travel to Volusia County, to visit our beautiful remodeled airport and all the other amenities that we have to offer in Volusia. So I would, I was going into this from the approach of, okay, let, maybe if we do approve it, can we enter into some agreement to have certain features or, or marketing benefits from it? Knowing that it's not available for this one, that kind of takes the, the wind out of my sail where I was, where I was going with it. And so if you could give me some more data, I guess, to expand on Troy's question, give me more to show why this is good for Volusia. I know we don't have any ROI numbers on the investment, you know, what, what the economic impact is going to be for Volusia, you know, by supporting this event. I, I would love to, if we don't support this, or we do support this, but at least at a minimum in the future, have that, that economic impact piece. I, I see the, the revenue, I mean, the household incomes, but I'm also kind of stuck with, this event is like a week, a week and a half away. So, although I respect your being here, but it's safe to say this event is happening regardless of us. And I would rather approach this, I guess I'm going to get into debate, Mr. Chair, but I would rather approach this as more of a consideration for 2024 if there are some good data points for us to support as a, as a good investment for Volusia County. So why are you here a week and a half before? I got to ask you that, because I.
That's a fair question. Councilman Santiago, my name is Bill Christie. I'm CEO of Clash. I've met with many of you over the last six months, and I'm sorry, we didn't get a chance to get together. I know we tried, so I greatly apologize. That probably has a lot to do with the timing of us trying to get together. I'd like to address two points. The first point is, we switched from race coverage, right, on NBC, on Fox, to a docu-series format. And the reason we did that was because we thought people were getting tired of watching pros running around the track. So we wanted a storytelling, which is why we did the segment Watkins Glen, and they contributed about $100,000 to do that, by the way. And so when we did that and found it to be successful in Miami, we did a segment that was all about letting the athletes tell their story. There was no commentation, there was no nothing. That hit over 42,000 on Facebook and over 12,000 on our, on our YouTube channel. So the.
As well as, we had a, was it nine airings between FS1 and FS2 for our Miami show?
Which was surprising to me that we actually got it on TV, because it was supposed to go to the content team, where we don't have any relationships, and the sports team kept it, because it was a docu-series format. So our hope is that with the piece that we're doing on the three women coming together, that that docu-series is going to get us enough attention on Facebook and on YouTube to be able to do that, highlighting the area. Our intention with this show is to show everything from people coming to the beach, coming to the west side of the county, engulfing the entire county, to be able to drive that number without us spending over $500,000 to put it on TV. It's a big number, right? I mean, we talk about the dollars and why we're here. The cost to put this race on with TV is over $900,000, game near $1 million. So now you know why we ask for all the support we can. And I think those are fair numbers to share with you, because I think you need to understand why we're in front of you. If we have the ability to continue to do that, we still get to highlight where we are and the great place we live. But the benefit, as far as we're concerned, is we want to bring more value to the county. We think that using the trail system for a race, races don't make a lot of money, right? Because you're 40 bucks on a bike. The gravel ride, but those are great opportunities for us to expand our reach in the county and also use other parts of the county. So hopefully that answered your question about what do we get from the value proposition this time around? We're hoping to get back to televised events by a little bit more of a competitive aspect, but we found the docu-series format to be much more attractive to people who wanted to learn about people like us and why we get dragged into these sports, be it a 5K event, which you guys have one here in town that's amazing, to a highly competitive event.
Yeah, I agree the docu-series approach is, is the way to go. That's proven to be successful in many sports racing, including car racing. I'm going to use F1 as an example. The Netflix series has made that skyrocket.
Huge.
And even made my wife a fan of car racing, just, you know, nothing personal here, but I got to say this, too. If I'd closed my eyes, I would have thought Bob Davis was standing in front of me, Joe. I don't know if you know Bob Davis.
Thank you. He's much better looking.
Final question, Mr. Chair. Can you, is there any opportunity to get, come up with a plan to highlight Volusia County trails, its accessibility, and to incorporate that? You know, I'm not a producer, but you know, you, you know, if I watch things, you see, you know, flyovers or something like that, and you show the trails from the air, incorporate it into your docu-series piece that clearly shows that you're in Volusia County, that kind of, is that, is there opportunities there that can show value?
Absolutely. In fact, I think we had talked about this specific item. I know, Councilman, we did, because you asked the same question. We have highlighted places for the athletes to train prior to the race. They got to come out and they got to warm up on their bikes, they got to do this, and I'm not going to put them on the roads, and that's a whole separate story about the safety issue, which we'll come back to, because you know the story about my friend who passed and why we do what we do. And we're famous for it all around the world. But we highlight the trail, especially now that it's connecting so far, as one of the places to go ride and warm up and train while you're here, right? The beach for open water swimming, definitely another area. The gravel ride is a phenomenal place for people to go out and train prior to. We've got a little bit of a hunting issue going on right now. So we're going to try and build that as a part of some of the things we have to offer as our athletes are training as a part of this docu-series. So that's how we're incorporating it this time, but we want to build a gravel ride here, because we think it's that amazing. We want to build a cycling event here, because we think this trail, especially as it gets completed, is going to be a phenomenal opportunity.
Yeah, and as I mentioned, the long form with USA hosting the Olympics in 2028, USA Triathlon, we're also doing with them a race official certification clinic. I've been learning a ton more about the backend of international sports politics, but the hosting nation has to provide X amount of race officials as the host member of the sports federation. So USA Triathlon has to provide a certain amount of race officials for the 2028 Games. They have to get certified, they have to get experience at international caliber events. So they will be officiating our event in Miami this year. So obviously, as we continue to grow, there'll be a number of opportunities between now and 2028 to bring high caliber racing and televised products back here to Daytona and to Volusia County. Obviously, I cannot give you a concrete answer on that. That's also a long, multi-step process for international bids, approval process, but that will be something that we will be working on, as we'll be bringing one of the C-level executives from USA Triathlon to our event here this December.
Hopefully that answered your question, Councilman Santiago.
Anything else?
Councilman Kent, did you have a question?
I do.
Okay.
Yes. So interesting, I heard that Halifax Advertising Authority-
Looking at me, so I'm guessing.
Well, you're the CEO. You came up. And it doesn't matter who answers it, but, you know, I heard that the HOB board, Halifax Advertising Authority, has participated with you all.
Absolutely.
So what's that dollar amount that they gave you all?
Yeah, sure. That's you.
Thank you. The HOB board for this event gives us $25,000. That is specifically only allowed to be used for marketing, and we have specific guidelines of what we can use that for, and then we have to report back. So they give us that money, but all of that money is spent directly back to marketing, and then I provide information to them so that they see it's not like they give us 25, and, I mean, you know how it works.
Got you. Are there any other public tax dollars, so to say, that you all have received? Because I wasn't aware of the HOB board, and I'm glad you brought that up, Councilman Johansson. Have you received any other public dollars? You know, has anybody else put in on this, I guess? You know, maybe Daytona Beach or someone else?
So the police as a payment kind provide the police service for us.
Is that Daytona Beach?
It is Daytona Beach. The sheriff does as well for their geography. We do pay hard cash for the state police, but that good news is that's not a ton of money. And we were sort of looking at this not as, when we had talked about it with many of you, it was really an approach of what can you take off our plate that you might be able to offset that $60,000 because of your contracts for less, and you'd be paying them-
Right.
-a better rate. So that's sort of the way we had approached it in our discussions initially. But to answer your question specifically, yes, the police, yes, the sheriff.
And yes, the HOB board.
And yes, the HOB board. But we, again, they commit the money, but they don't pay it until we justify it.
Got you. And I appreciate you sharing that, you know, with us. We didn't need, I don't know why, but I, you know, next time, reach out to me. I'd like, because I think you could answer a lot of my questions.
Absolutely, and I truly believe we really made an attempt at that. So we failed, that's on us.
Okay. Looks like there's another question after me, and it may, it may help me. I can tell you, I'm trying to find a reason to have a good answer for my constituents, and I'm thinking about that couple I met with today.
Yeah.
And with what Councilman Johansson and Santiago mentioned, you know, if you had that TV piece, that would be a good justification I could use. It would give me a great answer. And I know we don't know each other, but if there's something about me that I will share with you is that I can't stand it when I'm flat-footed with my constituents, my bosses, and they ask me good questions, and I don't have a good answer. I, you know, I don't like that. You saw me just wring my hands right there. Just the thought of it bugs me. If that TV piece was there, I could be a yes. I just, I haven't heard anything yet, counsel, that has made me feel comfortable telling my constituents, yes, this is why I decided to take your tax dollars and give it away because here's our return on investment. I just, I just haven't heard that yet, and maybe I will.
Well, let's debate that. Mr. Santiago, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a motion. I'll make a motion and a comment right afterwards.
Okay.
I move that we deny the request, and with the reason for the denial, I think there are some missing pieces. However, I want your event to be successful. I want you to come back and work with our staff and incorporate those things that we've talked about and really selling the ROI. I don't think you rose the threshold, at least for me, to, almost similar to, he articulates it a lot better than I do. But we've been very tough here with funding requests and very effective in trying to cut taxes, and I can't answer those questions either. So, so I was going toward the yes when I seen all that stuff in there, and I was like, I think I can get there, justify 60, 65,000, or whatever the number is to say, well, marketing's very expensive, but we don't have that element here right now that I think is presentable for us to make a vote today.
Now, I think they, you guys do have one of our sizzle reels queued up, and I apologize that the catchphrase, but a picture is worth a thousand words. I might let some of the content speak for us if you have that queued up.
Very nice. Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor, which is to deny, but there's not a second yet to go into debate. Was there?
I'll second the motion, Chairman.
By Troy Kent. Okay. Councilman Johansson.
Sorry, I do have a quick question, which is fine right now. The sheriff is going to give you some in-kind. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Do you know how much in-kind he's giving?
I can give you an approximation.
Approximation would be fine.
$7,500.
Okay. Because that basically is taxpayer money as well, right? So I just, $7,500. Thanks.
Thank you. I guess I'll go first. I did get to meet with you, and I think it's a tremendous event. It's everything that we want to say positive about Volusia County, its health, its families, its safety. But you, you said tonight you wanted to increase public involvement, or maybe the county manager said that. And I agree with that, and the way to increase public involvement for a for-profit business is to, I think Jake said, you spend money to make money. If the way to increase public involvement is to come here and ask us to basically donate public taxpayer money, I don't, I don't see that as the best option. You also said you wanted to build on the successes that we have had. You have had successes, and you're very capable people. You're very smart. Your success, in my opinion, I hope you agree, depends on your business model. And if your success, if your business model is not such that you can't be profitable or you can't continue without us donating taxpayer money, then you need to change your business model. As much as I want to see this work and hope it continues, this is not the purpose of government, to give taxpayer money to for-profit companies. That's my opinion and my philosophy. We do that too much. We're trying to step back. And we had a person in the audience tonight that said, I don't know if it's true or not, I haven't verified it with staff, but that they had a flooding problem, and they were told by staff that we didn't have money to fix the flooding problem. I can't give our taxpayer dollars to a for-profit company for a great event, as great as it is, if we don't have money to fix the flooding our residents are dealing with every single day. Morally, I just can't do that. I'll cheerlead for you, I'll help you any way I can. I won't vote to give taxpayer money to a for-profit business because I think you're smart enough to make it work without $74,000 from us. Jake Johansson.
Thank you, Chairman. You know, I go back to, to the tenants of government, and that's since we've chatted. I've had a struggle with, and you're not the first person that's come to us for a request. We've, we've cut some social services since we've all been elected and taken our seats here. We've cut funding to 501(c)(3)'s with, with at least an indication that we might further do that, to try to make them self-sufficient so new nonprofits can come in and maybe succeed. The chairman's right, we do give money occasionally, or discounts, or subsidies, some would call it, to private entities for economic development, but that's kind of in our, that's one of our goals, that's one of our, not core responsibilities, but core goals among us as elected officials that the chairman accurately reflects we're trying to get away from. So I have a problem with this as well, and seeing as you're, you're already getting taxpayer money, the sheriff, albeit $7,500, is property taxpayers' money, his to give out, but theirs to pay for. And the HOB board from bad taxes for other marketing, so it might be a little bit easier to swallow if it was a 501(c)(3) and there was a lot of live TV coverage. I love that, that video. If that video was something that, that, you know, people up where I'm from in western New York could see and say, isn't that where you live? We're coming down, that'd be great. But something tells me that's not just going to get the kind of viewing that are going to get people down here. And, and oh, by the way, the advantage to this, which I do like, is according to your stats, you got a lot of rich people coming down here to participate, and hopefully, they'll decide to stay out of the cold and come down here to, to live, and then we'll deal with traffic and all that. But, boy, I'm not too jaded on this right now. Thank you, Chairman.
Councilman Reinhardt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Christie, we met a while back, and I loved the idea. I fell in love with the many who gave it to me or told us about it. And then I'm listening to my, my partners up here. And the nonprofit part, you know, they point that out, that that's hard, that's hard, especially we have individuals still in the audience that we're going to talk to about nonprofits. And so it's going to be hard to do that, I can be honest. The other thing with, with respect to nonprofit and the amount of money and whatnot, we still have issues that we have to take care of. We have road issues that we discussed in previous issue, or previous meetings. We just went through and had a great budget time to get through my first one ever. Gave me a whole new outlook on the budget. I mean, and unbelievable, I thought I dealt with a lot of it in corrections for 30 years. Yeah, I had to make the corrections push one time. So, but obviously on a much larger scale. And, you know, the gentleman that came down here tonight to talk about the infrastructure, and we're on the piggyback of two hurricanes, and I have an area over midtown right now that, you know, they're hurting in a bad way. And they could certainly, I have to answer to them, you know, and then I have to look at them and say, okay, you're going to spend this money on that, but what about us? They don't look at the, what it brings in, they don't look about the return on investment, they don't care about that, they just want help. And I get that. So, so I don't, I don't know where I'm at. So.
Thank you. Carissa, I don't see any more, any more debate. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Johansson?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Mr. Reinhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Brower?
Yes, and you understand that yes is, is a negative for you, is to deny. You heard from, we all hope and want you to be successful in this. We just, we just need you to do it as a business for profit and-
Correct.
So, thank you, and-
We appreciate-
Best of luck.
No, we appreciate your time, and it was a joy to meet somebody that, so thank you guys for listening. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you all, and happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Good luck with the event.
You, too. Takes us to item four, presentation and resolution supporting BikeWalk Central Florida Best Foot Forward. That's what the red shirts were for.
We were worried.
Good evening, council. Jay Williams, county traffic engineer. Item four is a presentation from BikeWalk Central Florida about their Best Foot Forward pedestrian safety program, which they're seeking a resolution and support from council for expansion of this program into Volusia County. Their representatives here from BikeWalk Central Florida to provide their presentation, and then afterwards, staff as well as their group will be available to answer any questions that you guys have. Jake, did you have a question before we start? Okay. Welcome, and congratulations to you.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman and council members. My name is Emily Bush. I just recently got married, and I'm the executive director of BikeWalk Central Florida. We are a nonprofit advocacy organization here in central Florida, advocating and educating for pedestrian and bicycle safety, to make more, make communities more walkable, bikeable, and rolable. Rolable is for all of those that are wheelchair-bound or in assisted devices, or like me, new moms with strollers. We have to be able to push our children places and make that safe as well. And BikeWalk Central Florida operates one of the largest coalitions in pedestrian safety, the Best Foot Forward program, and have done so for the past 11 years successfully in central Florida. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about that program and how we are expanding that here in Volusia County today. You're probably familiar with the State of Florida's initiative for Vision Zero. Their program is called Target Zero, and I believe you also passed a resolution to support this effort. And so the Best Foot Forward program is being supported by the Florida Department of Transportation because they realize that this is a part of their suite of programs and services to help get us to or closer to zero. For the audience, that is to reduce the number of serious fatalities and injuries to zero. We know we can do it. We have a unfortunate number of people that lose their lives on our roadways every year, and we, through this program and through FDOT's Target Zero, try to prevent those deaths and serious injuries. So what is the Best Foot Forward program? It started from a NHTSA study back in 1998 in the Gainesville UF area, and was repeated across the United States. And it basically takes this 4E approach into consideration as to how people treat people, drivers, I should say, treat people walking in crosswalks. So our goal is to change driver behavior. Change behavior, we know, takes a really long time, and there are lots of ways we could focus on behavior change for people driving. And so we thought that if we got more drivers to stop and let people cross at marked crosswalks in our community, the more people would feel comfortable using those marked crosswalks and would seek them out to cross the road, maybe not run out in front of vehicles or take their life into their hands crossing in places that are not safe for them to do so. And so we've been measuring this rate of data collection, or I should say, this rate of pedestrians that cross the road by the number of drivers that yield to them or stop. And I'll tell you a little bit more about that in a minute. But to start, I want to point out that we've had success in Orange, Osceola, and Seminole Counties since we've launched this program. The percentages that you see in the counties outlined on the inside of your screen is the rate of increase or improvement of drivers stopping to let people cross the road over time. And as you can see, a lot of that depends on where those people are at in their community wanting to cross. We also-
Mr. Chair, I'm so sorry to interrupt. I just realized we lost form. We have to wait until we get one more back in the room.
Yeah. I'm, I'm sorry to have to interrupt you for a minute, but, and here they come now.
now.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt.
That's all right.
Okay, we're good.
Good, okay. So, we also mark, we collect...
Just before you do, I want to tell you that he could still hear you in that room. We have speakers.
Then I'll just keep going. Awesome. All right. So, we collect this data in various areas throughout our community, and we can tell that improving the driver yield rate in commercial, residential, or mixed-use areas, we can take some of these trends and apply them across the communities where we see some success. To start, I'll start in 2012, in Orange County alone, the starting-out collection that we had for pedestrian crossing the road was about 17%. So that means out of 100 cars, only 17 actually stopped and let the person that wanted to cross the road cross, which was really low. Today, we have over half of those drivers that now know the driver yield law from our 4E approach, and are stopping and letting people cross the road on roadways that are 35 miles an hour on, or slower. And that percentage rate almost is around the same, it's 2% to 43% on roads that are 40 miles an hour or greater. It's a little bit harder for us to stop and see the pedestrian on the side of the road when we're going that fast. Speed absolutely has an impact to this, and so, we're really happy to see those improvements on such high-speed roadways. So adopting this resolution tonight just allows our program to really commence in Volusia County. We put together a steering committee of professionals that are in law enforcement, traffic engineering, planners, public schools, our hospitals, and other nonprofit organizations that all work towards pedestrian and bicycle safety. We put on workshops, meetings, and then we start really engaging the community through our education and outreach efforts. We will work with the Volusia County Sheriff's Office to do an enforcement operation, along with collecting data at crosswalks within your communities. And those crosswalks are determined based on the coalition, where they think those hotspots are. This could be based on crash data, this could be based on anecdotal information from the Volusia County Sheriff's Office, it could be based on any of that. And so, how do we collect this data? We don't just run out in front of a car and see if they stop, that's incredibly dangerous. We do something called a, we create a dilemma zone. Essentially, we mark the distance that's safe for a driver to come to a complete stop based on the speed limit, so whatever that distance is, couple hundred feet, 400 feet for a larger speed limit of road, we mark that distance, and then our pedestrian data collector puts their foot in the crosswalk to have intent to cross the road. The driver does one of three things at that point. They stop and they let you cross the road, they either go around you because they're distracted speeding, or they just don't care, or they slam on the brakes because they saw you all of a sudden, and then they give you the hand to let you know that you're safe to cross the crosswalk. So we mark all of that data down, and we provide that to our coalition and discuss ways to improve the crosswalks by collecting this data. We do enforcements with the law enforcement partners on a quarterly basis, and we go out and do mainly focused education. So it's not about the citations or the warnings that are handed out, it's about the information as to why we're doing this, why we're one of the worst in the country at striking people that are crossing the road, and what they, as a driver, can do about it, their roles and responsibilities as abiding by the Florida statute. We also work with our engineering and our traffic team to suggest low-cost engineering solutions at these crosswalks. It's one thing that we collect the data, it's another thing that we enforce it, but the most important thing is, is making those visual cues to drivers that there is someone that wants to cross the road here, and you need to slow down and be aware of that. And it doesn't take rebuilding the road. As you guys have all talked about budget constraints, a lot of our communities are feeling that, and there is more roadways now than ever to have to be resurfaced, or restripped, or have signs be replaced. And so, our team looks at where those important, those needs are in your community, and we strongly suggest those low-cost engineering solution measures that do make an impact on the driver yield rate. We have lots of examples of that throughout the three counties that we operate this program in currently. The last piece is education. It's really about educating us as drivers, us as pedestrians, us as people that want to walk and bike in our community. What are the rules of the road? And we do so by educating not only at presentations and events throughout the community, but where we're asked to be. So, if you have constituents that want to know what the law is, or have issues with people not yielding to them in their community, invite us out, because oftentimes, it might be some residents in the neighborhood that might not know that that's the law. It could be kids that just kinda dart out in front of cars and don't look right, left, and right again. So we do different educational events and do different presentations based on the audience, and it's really all about educating how we can all be safe together. We do this also through digital media, social media, and then our media partners, to the point where we have a return on investment of $6.6 million worth of ad value based on just our stories being in the news. So it's a huge return on your investment, but it's not just about the return on investment, it's about getting those eyeballs to see those messages, which is to be not distracted when you're behind the wheel, stop and let somebody cross the road, and then of course, be a vigilant pedestrian as well. So, I'm not here today seeking funding from you. This program is funded right now for two years through the Florida Department of Transportation. They receive funding through an FHWA grant, so federal funding gets funneled into the state, and then the state appropriates that funding towards this program as a part of their efforts towards Target Zero. This funding is only good for two years though. They do wanna kinda rotate counties, bring them into the program, and then move on to other counties that have these issues without the state, throughout the state as well. So in 2026, we will be coming back to you and seeking funding from Volusia County and/or other partners, including the TPO, to continue the program, if of course, you feel like it's been successful in your community. Since its founding, since its initial founding in 2012, Orange County, along with Metro Plano Orlando, Osceola County, and Seminole County have been funding this program in its entirety, along with cities and other partners as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about this program, about the funding, and what's next in Volusia County. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Santiago.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. I move to approve the resolution.
Okay.
I'll second. Okay. You have a motion to approve by David Santiago, a second by Troy Kent. Did you have another question, or?
No, I'm ready to vote.
Jake. Jake Johansson.
Yes, sir. Thank you Chairman. I know other, I saw you at the TPO, got the brief. How many other counties have you worked with? Three or four?
Write down three, we are expanding into three more.
And, and is their grant over? Is there any counties whose grant is over and are paying out of their own pocket?
Yes. That is Orange, Seminole, and Osceola County.
Got it, now you're off to us. Your Bike Walk Central Florida, this is probably walking our bikes across the pedestrian crossing, or walking across the pedestrian crossing. Upon completion of this Best Foot Forward campaign, can we leverage you all to help us with the bike part? Because, our sheriff will tell you, you may have been hit once or twice, and unfortunately, we had a deputy, Ray George, it was a deputy that passed away a couple of years ago. Being an ex-habit bike rider, I worry that our bike riders are a little arrogant on and off the road as well. There are, there are rules that you follow if you're on a bike on a sidewalk in a pedestrian crossing, and there are rules you follow as a bike rider if you're on a road, and they closely resemble vehicular traffic. So, I, I hope that as we move forward, we continue to not hit people in pedestrian crossings, but we also work on, on educating the pedestrians who very often are looking at their cell phones and not paying attention, and bike riders who are less than professional on the road. So, I have no problem now. We'll see what happens in 2026, but you got my support right now. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you.
Councilman Kent.
Thank you Chairman. And, Councilman Johansson, you brought up something I wasn't gonna, I wasn't gonna talk about, but because you did, I am, and you know, no, I appreciate it. And it was the piece about the bicyclists on the road, and I was just having this conversation with my parents. And my wife and son and I, we love to ride bikes, but I refuse to allow my family to ride on public roads. We have to go to trails, or designated bike paths, because I am scared to death at the number of people I see on their cell phones driving those vehicles. And then it's a, "I'm sorry," "I'm sorry" doesn't bring anybody in my family back, or anybody else. And I was just saying, you know, it's gonna take money, but I think we really need to leverage the state of Florida and be a leader with this, and have designated bike areas on major roadways. Because like, I think of John Anderson, I know you all are aware, up in Ormo by the Sea, and that road is so narrow, and people ride the loop on that, and it is absolutely frightening, as the driver of a vehicle, to go around those individuals, and I just feel like they need a safer, better way, and sharing, I don't know who came up with the idea that all bicyclists need to share the road with between 2,000 and 5,000 pound vehicles, you know, and it's, but it's against the law to ride a bicycle on a sidewalk. I'm like, I would rather, I would rather no accident, but if there's gonna be an accident, I'd rather it be a pedestrian and a bicyclist, than a bicyclist in a vehicle, but that's for another story. What I really wanted to say was, it's really interesting to me, because you mentioned how dangerous, I guess, Florida is with pedestrians and crosswalks. And Council, I've had the great fortune in my life to spend a couple of months, two different times, on the island of Maui in Hawaii, and it's not the same everywhere. This was before there were these rapid rectangular flashing signs, and when I tell you that on South Kihei Road in Maui, the pedestrians did not wait for any vehicle, they just started to walk across the street, and the vehicles stopped. People were acutely aware, and it was a different vibe, completely. And I think pedestrians are safer there, and, you know, it's, it's something that I think we could reach out to communities like that and say, "What exactly is it you're doing differently?" Because, I mean, people just cross the road whenever they wanted, in the proper crosswalks, but if you had a green light, you were screeching your tires to stop to allow them to get by, and it's something that's just stuck with me after, after all these years. And yes, Councilman Santiago, I'll quit being so chatty.
Oh.
Thank you. It's good to see you again. I heard your, you, you made this presentation at the TPO. It was well-received, I think it was well-received here. I'm going to support it for two reasons. One is that, what Mr. Kent just said, we need it. There's, we're not safe, and we have a growing bicycle-riding population, and streets that aren't accommodating them. It's, it's dangerous. I have a friend who lost his leg on the street that Mr. Kent was talking about, on John Anderson, very narrow, a talented surfer, and he lost his leg, before cell phones. So it's just, it's dangerous, we need it. What I like, the other reason I'm gonna support it, is that you were really upfront. You said, "I'm not asking for money, yet. We're gonna go to work for you for two years, and then we're gonna come back and, and ask for funding." I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you how much that ask is gonna be in just a minute, because I wanna know, but what I like about it is it gives us two years to see if it's worthwhile. I, I believe that it will be, because I've seen what you do. We're building a Sun Rail station, and a lot of it, we're centering around bicycle traffic, bringing bikes from the rest of, of central Florida to utilize our path system, our trail system here. So, we're gonna, we're gonna need it. What will that ask be in two years? Do you know yet?
So, we're estimating that to be around $60,000 to $80,000 annually. Right now, that's what the other counties that participate pay for the program.
So we got, we have two years to think about that?
Correct.
All right.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Then all in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good job.
Thank you. Appreciate your support. Thank you.
Motion carries five to zero. Okay, that takes us to item five, authorizing an application to the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administrative Climate Resilience Regional Challenge. Is he still here? I know there was a man here that wanted to talk about it, and I think we out-talked him. Okay, go ahead.
Good evening Clay Irvin, Director of Growth and Resource Management. It's my pleasure to ask your permission to submit an application to NOAA for a $50 million grant that it does not require a match.
Motion approved.
Second.
Enough said. You ever heard that? Enough said?
Second.
Motion approved.
Second.
We got a second.
Okay, motion...
I had, I just wanted to say one thing real quick.
We, we'll, let me get this down before we, motion to approve by David Santiago, and it was a second by Troy Kent, better known as Trent.
Trent.
Okay. And for a question?
Actually, not even a question, just a quick comment. Quick comment. Very excited about this. Super, super, and George can tell you why. Well, you can as well, with respect to what we can do with, some of that with training and whatnot, planning with the sea oats and mangroves. We wanna start that project at the jail. This is our way to do it. Yes, very excited about that. I had to bring it up, guys, I'm sorry, but I'm very excited about that.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to say, the quick motion is a testament to how much we have confidence in staff. I want you to know that, especially from me and I think my colleagues. So, you being there and sitting down, a high degree of confidence, and if you put this work before us, it's, it's good for me.
Yes, and we do our homework. We read this stuff, and we know what we're dealing with, top-notch.
And last comment, the reason I was happy to hear that, we had a lot of people in front of us. Whatever your staff did to go out and win, it's impressive, and so, thank you for hard, good work. We have two members of the public that wanna speak to this, to convince us to vote for it. Would you still like to speak? Kelly's saying, everybody's good, everybody's happy. Carissa, I don't even, go ahead, Mr. Okay, I don't think we need to call the roll. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Keep it to yourself.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ginger, you waited all night for that. Item six, and everybody else in here has waited all night for this, publication of legal notices on the county website.
Thank you Mr. Chair. Paulo Soria, Senior Assistant County Attorney. This is item six. This is a publication of legal notices of the county website. I'm going to refer to, this is HB 7049. This is a recent bill that was actually adopted in the 2022 legislative session. However, it did not take, come into effect until January of this year. Effectively, what it does, is it allows a county to designate its own website, or to designate a private website, and to allow local governments to publish legal notices, statutory legal notices, on that website in lieu of publication in a newspaper of general circulation. So only the counties are offered this, I guess, I don't say opportunity, but essentially, they are provided this, the ability to provide this service to itself and to other local governments within the county. There are requirements to use the website. It must be cheaper to publish on the website than it is in a newspaper. There need to, there needs to be an annual notice that's published in a general newspaper, saying that residents, you know, may receive email or first-class mail notice. And, the link to the publicly-accessible website must be on the local government homepage, or on a page directly linked from the homepage. So if you're taking, there are some considerations that you may want to take into, into account. One is flexibility and efficiency. If the county is running its own website, it doesn't have to go through a third-party process. It's, you know, it has direct access to it. It allows us to be a little bit more flexible about what we put on there, and how we put it on there in the timeframes. It kind of shortens the timeframes. You know, a consideration is, you know, does the public have sufficient access to the internet? You don't have to, by statute, make this determination, because we have a large enough population in the county. We have over 500,000 person, people. You do not make, have to make an independent determination of that sufficient internet access. There are some limitations on the use of the website. One, it only applies to those legal notices required by statute. So if the federal law requires it, if the grant application requires it, or if there is a local requirement that still requires publication on a newspaper... is a local requirement that still requires publication on a newspaper, we still abide by the newspaper publication. Additionally, the reason for the length of the memo is I went through a lot of the statutes. And look, there are some statutes that still have that language that requires publication in a newspaper that will have to be examined on a case-by-case basis and seeking additional guidance from the Attorney General or the particular department to determine, do we still have to publish in a newspaper? Or despite that language, can we publish on the publicly accessible county website? So costs and revenues. So in the, in the memorandum, we, the county departments and just the county departments, I'm not talking about the municipalities or the other constitutionals, the advertising cost is approximately $110,000 per year. So based on that historical data, analyzing what of those advertisements we could have published on the website, you know, we determined that we could reduce expenses by approximately $70,000 per year. There is an unknown amount of potential revenue if you choose to charge participating local governments. Once again, that limitation set by statute, is it must be less expensive to publish on the county website than it is in a newspaper of general circulation. There's some additional implementation costs. While we can do it in-house, our recommendation is there are third-party service providers who do this sort of, you know, service or activity. They run publication websites. So, you know, it's approximately $2,000 per month, plus, you know, they take a percentage of the cost. Additionally, they, they have the cost of the affidavit of the proof of publication, as well as, you know, the unknown potential cost for any email or first-class mail notices. There's also the, the cost of, there's the annual publication in a newspaper. Every single local government that wants to participate and publish on the website needs to have its own annual publication, at least. So staff is kind of seeking direction. There's more information in the memorandum. But if you proceed and give staff direction, there are some implementation provisions. So if you approve, this is essentially what we're going to do. We're going to start the procurement process for a third-party service provider. You're giving our office the authority to draft an ordinance that kind of goes into the county codes and amends the local codes to comply with HB 7049. It's authority for the county manager to start and create the policies, procedures, agreements, MOUs, and fee structures. We will come back to you for any fees for implementation. If we go that way, fees are going to be approved by resolution of council. So I'm available for any questions, if you have any.
Councilman Santiago.
Quick question. You mentioned $110,000. Can we go back to one? I know you said this is for the county only, and your projections, based on the information you've gotten, we may save approximately $70,000, correct?
Yes.
Now, other county entities can choose, so like the clerk of the court, anything that their statutes are already allowed to? Tax collector's office, sheriff's office, they could all tap into this and have savings too?
Yes, yes. So if we, if the provision is, is the statute allows the county to offer a service. And so, you know, whenever we offer service, usually, you know, you want to at least come out cost neutral. So other local governments and the sheriff's office and the tax collector, they can use this, this website as long as it's allowable by their statutory procedures.
So 70,000, if it's correct, could be the floor, the minimum, for taxpayers to save in Volusia County?
And like I said, it's a conservative estimate. So that 70,000 is based on an analysis of, of the types of advertisements that didn't have that statutory restriction or language that still says publication in a newspaper of general circulation. If, you know, the interpretation is regardless of what it says directly on that topic, Chapter 50 says, okay, whenever something says you have to publish in a newspaper, it really means one of these two things. It means you can publish in a newspaper or you can publish on the county website. We're taking the conservative approach, so 70,000 is our minimum. It could be more depending upon more, you know, further interpretation or analysis by state departments.
Thank you.
So here's, here's kind of an example. The budget and trim notices still has language that says publish in a newspaper of general circulation. The Department of Revenue has issued guidance saying you can publish on a county website to meet that statutory requirement.
Councilman Reinhardt.
Thank you, Chair. What are the, you mentioned other counties. What other counties do you, are you aware of that are doing this?
Bay, Brevard, Broward are the three that I have in my memorandum. I believe Alachua has started recently, and I think Collier County. So those are the five that I know they have various forms. I think one of them is publishing both in the newspaper and on its website. So it's, it's doing both at the same time. I think they're, they're analyzing of what to do next.
Okay. And they didn't have any numbers to show what would have been, what their savings were as a result of it? We didn't go that far, did we? No? Okay. And you said this only addresses where the law stipulates it, unless the law, unless the law stipulates it, it has to be posted in the newspaper, correct?
Yes. So it only applies to statutory notices. So if there's something in the, a federal requirement that requires publication in the newspaper, we still have to do that. If it's, there's a grant requirement for publication in a newspaper, we still have to comply. And obviously, all of our local regulations still have statements saying publish in a newspaper of general circulation.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a couple of quick questions. Are we, are we replacing private business with another entity in, in government to do this? Or is we doing this with private business?
The statute allows the county to offer its website for publication of legal notices in lieu of publication in a newspaper of general circulation.
So we replace?
For some, for some notices, yes.
Mr. Chair, I wanted to add, but we could hire an outside still, it's permissible to manage it.
Yes, yes. So when I say the website, it's, it's either the county's own website or you designate a private website. The law allows for that.
So that leads me to my other question. Does this come back to the, because we don't, you've given us some estimates of what that might cost. We don't really know. Sometimes it costs more for government to take something over than private business does. When this comes back, you said you would bring back fees. Does the whole thing come back, is what I'm asking? Do we get to have a second bite of this and say, yeah, we?
Yes, yes. Obviously, if you give us direction, we're going to go out for an RFP to see, you know, what's out there. I know of at least three third-party vendors that provide it. Ultimately, this is a policy decision by the county council. You know, we would have to come back for, obviously, an ordinance to change all of our local publishing requirements. We would also have to come back for a fee resolution if we charge any fees to other local governments for using it.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Johansson.
Can you, can you define for me what general circulation means?
That is under Chapter 50 of the Florida statutes. I can quote you the Florida statute. But there's, a newspaper of general circulation needs to meet statutory criteria under 5.011. So has an audience consisting of at least 10% of the households in the county or municipality as determined by the most recent decennial census, where the legal or public notice is being published or posted by calculating the combination of the total number of print copies reflecting the day of the highest.
So at least 10% of what?
10% of the, of the households in the county or municipality as determined by the most recent decennial census. So newspaper of general circulation is area-dependent. You can have a newspaper of general circulation in the county, which gets you take 10% of the decennial census of the county.
Which is what at this point? What census?
Households, I think it was, I want to say 248 households.
Okay.
It's based on households.
That's right. Yeah, I remember that. Okay. 248.
So it's 10% of that. So approximately 24,000. But it's a combination of that, of the distribution on the highest day of distribution.
Sure.
Plus, I think, individual website hits throughout the entire state. So the, the state has prescribed a formula for determining what is a newspaper of general circulation. The county has no say in what constitute a newspaper of general circulation. They need to meet that criteria. I believe they also need to be publishing for two years. You know, that's, that's the state doing what they're, they're, they are saying is, yes, you can go ahead and, and publish legal notices.
Copy. Thanks.
Okay. If there's no other questions, I need a motion so that we can go into debate. Motion approved. Motion to approve by Jake Johansson, second by Councilman Santiago. And the motion is to approve sending this back to staff, who will then bring it back to us. Is there debate?
I believe there's public comment.
There's a lot of public comment. We'll do public comment first, and I have, I have at least one. Jane Katona. You'll be first. You'll have three. Yeah, lucky you.
Lucky me. All right. Well, good evening, Councilwoman. I'm Jane Katona. I'm an employee of Gannett Media, serving as the General Manager of the Daytona Beach News Journal. As a proud resident of Volusia County, I've called Port Orange home for 25 years. During this time, I've had the wonderful opportunity to raise three children within this community, one of whom is now a teacher in the Volusia County school system. At Gannett, we have a workforce of individually, individuals deeply rooted in Volusia County, people who live, work, and engage in the community. Their dedication sustains a free press, an indispensable tool for enabling the public to make informed decisions, holding leaders accountable, and embracing a diversity of opinions. Our mission is centered around keeping the public informed. As a medium, our proactive commitment to keeping our communities' abreast of information is constant, pushing out information 24/7. This is the true essence of public notices, ensuring active and continuous engagement in the public. The community is familiar with finding such notices in the Daytona Beach News Journal. It is a fundamental principle and basic right of the American society that details of government activities reach all parts of the community so they can make informed decisions. Our infrastructure is also in place. Gannett currently employs 110 individuals dedicated to typesetting public notices, supplying required affidavits, and facilitating the essential first-class mailings of these notices. We proactively promote our content and legal notices are readily accessible on the News Journal website without encountering a paywall. Our existing technology also allows us to seamlessly push these notices to floridapublicnotices.com, a centralized website for all public notices in Florida, ensuring convenient access for all citizens. When it comes to informing the public, a proactive approach is essential and being passive is not an option. We serve information to our community through multiple channels, and those channels are constantly evolving, and we are on the cutting edge of that evolution. A counting-owned website would limit access and information to your constituents. Many households still subscribe to the printed version, and over 1 million unique people monthly access our information online. When considering all the costs involved with staffing and administering public notices, website fees, affidavits, first-class mailings, and marketing, this, this could be more expensive, not cheaper, than using an experienced company with an infrastructure in place to continue to publish, publish these notices locally, in print and online, and statewide on floridapublicnotices.com. Based on this information, on behalf of all the employees of Volusia County, I'm asking you to reconsider this unnecessary investment in a passive website that actually provides less notice to the citizens of Volusia County. Thank you for your time and consideration.
James Blanco. Sorry. You can tell me what your name really is.
I'll tell you right now. It's probably my handwriting. James Blasco. Yeah. Definitely was my handwriting, right? Okay. I am the Regional Advertising Director for the Daytona Beach News Journal and Gannett Media. I work with Jane Katona. I was, I had a big speech, but instead I thought I'd read a letter from one of our, our valued readers, that the letter's actually addressed to the council, which I'll give a copy afterwards, if you'd like. This gentleman's name is Louis Long III. He is a retired Air Force veteran. I am in full support of publishing legal notices in newspapers. Every week, I sit in, I sit with my newspaper in hand to check out the legal notices, especially the applications for tax deeds. Just recently, I saw one owned by a local charitable trust fund that provides health and dental care for those who cannot afford it. I called them to give them a heads up that a valuable piece of property they owned in the land in an upscale neighborhood was up for bidding. Their board of directors thanked me profusely for filling them in on this and how to make sure the taxes were duly paid before the county auction. I have checked legal ads in newspapers for years, because I can mark them off after I have checked them out, and they continue later if I cannot check them all at one time. This is much more efficient than trying to do it online. Over the years, I have found many tax deed applications for churches, as well as friends and neighbors that I have notified about upcoming auctions. For example, the Episcopal Church in Port Orange, who told me when I called them that the church doesn't pay taxes. I informed them, however, that they do pay fees, such as stormwater, garbage, fire, and such, and that they needed to pay them or stand to lose the church. Cindy Taylor, our generational friend and attorney, helped out too, especially when needed, to track down church officials from an organization no longer in existence. This is just one of tens of thousands of readers and online visitors that we have that are not just loyal to our newspaper, but the content that we publish each and every day. They view the content that we provide as not just something for them to do each and every day, but as part of our democracy. The information that we put out every day, our job, our responsibility is to put it in the hands of your constituents. Now, what happens when you remove the funding that goes towards these legal advertisements is you hit in the gut to local journalism. The local journalism that is there as part of a watchdog for the government, that's what it's there for. One of the things, and Jane brought up, is that the, the website that you'll put out there is passive. You ask how many readers we may have, but you need to look at how many visitors go to your website every single day. Thank you.
Thank you. I hope I don't give everybody a new name tonight. Jim Fogler?
Fogler.
Fogler. Well, there you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, for your time and for all you do for Volusia County. My name is Jim Fogler, President of the Florida Press Association, and represent 160 newspapers throughout the state, including the Daytona News Journal, the Volusia Beacon, and the Hometown News, and they're all here tonight. We believe it is the public who will be the ultimate losers if you decide to move your government notices to your own website. First off, the county website will result in a direct conflict of notice, or should I say, conflict of interest, by county officials. The county and its vendors will be directly overseeing the timing, the placement, and the content of the public notice on its own county activities. That's a, that's a bad idea. If a scheduled public notice is not published or contains incorrect information, like I can't even imagine if the fuel farm hearing didn't appear on your website, that would have been a disaster. We believe the newspaper is more likely to catch that mistake. Secondly, the government website will reduce transparency and will create much confusion amongst the public. Did you know the Florida Press Association currently hosts a free aggregated website and a mobile site called floridapublicnotices.com? We've had it in place since 2012, and we updated and modernized it in 2022. So if government notices now go directly on your county site, it will no longer be available for citizens on our FPA site, including the added benefit of free email and text notifications. In return, we will now have a patchwork of government notices across many different county government websites across the state, including Volusia County, if it gets approved. Finally, it will be costly to implement the website, I heard that earlier, where newspapers already provide the necessary intake, oversight, proof of notification, and publication services. The bill says there must be cost savings for governments to move to web-only. But how can a local government know that before proceeds with the website? What if the cost of first-class mailing and affidavit preparation, which are required in the bill, in a few months or more, rises to an unattainable level? At that point, and I won't use the train analogy, I'll use, there's no going back as the whore. back, as the horse will be led out of the barn, and the public, a lot of them in this room tonight, will be a loser again. So in closing, newspapers have played a vital role in providing transparency about government activities through public notices. It's worked more than 100 years. Why fix something that's not broken? Now, with the digital reach of newspapers through their e-ditions, websites, the state website I just mentioned, notifying the public has never been more efficient, effective, and more impactful today. For these reasons, we ask to please consider continuing the current proven system of using your local newspaper for informing citizens and forego the option of placing your government notices on your website with the many downsides. Or here's an idea: consider doing both, run them in your local newspaper and on the government website. We heard that earlier, which will give your citizens more notice. Thank you for your time.
Barb Shepherd. I got that name right.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Barb Shepherd. I'm the publisher of the West Volusia Beacon, a newspaper I helped found 31 years ago. The Beacon employs 27 members of the community. Our print products reach 22,000 households a week. Our website attracts a million viewers a year. As a newspaper publisher, I'm no stranger to the idea of cutting expenses. I understand and I respect the county council's commitment to doing the best possible and most efficient job with the taxpayers' money. What I don't understand is why the county would undercut its own homegrown businesses by using taxpayer dollars to create a new bureaucracy to do a job that local private enterprises are already doing well, all to create negligible savings, a minuscule percentage of the county budget, that will significantly reduce your service to the public. In many cases, the cost of publishing a legally required notice is built into an application fee or permit fee that the county charges. So, so in these cases, the, the cost of the advertising is being paid by the people, like a developer who wants a zoning change, who create the need for the ad. The proposal being discussed here may look good on paper, stop running public notices in newspapers and save the money. But what that simple equation leaves out, I believe, first of all, is the transparency and the service to the public of having these notices in newspapers. It also ignores the value, and others have mentioned this, of the functionality and service those newspapers provide, and ignores the true cost of replacing that with taxpayer funding. There will be ongoing labor costs for the web platform, loading content, maintaining, updating, fixing things, tracking the publications, coordinating with the website providers, getting those affidavits created, providing customer service, and so on, especially if you start your own little small business of selling the county's website service to other government entities. Private enterprise, including the Beacon, is already doing the job of publishing legal notices online, and we're doing it well. The Beacon, for example, has invested in a robust platform for publishing legal notices. To best serve your constituents, you would continue to publish legal notices out in the open, in newspapers, and on newspaper websites, where many people are used to finding them. If you are determined to go online only, I would urge you to use an already-existing newspaper website, maybe even the Beacon's, and support your local businesses instead of creating more county government to replace them. Thank you.
Thank you. Cecil Brawley.
Whoa.
Not even close, but that's okay.
He leaps across.
Good evening. Y'all may have noticed the crowd that was here earlier, from, most of them from Beaver, Beaver Creek, I think it's called, Bear Creek, but then also elsewhere in Ormond Beach. The crowd was very indicative of your constituents. In the information just released by the Volusia County Department of Economic Development, it shows that 27% of the residents of Volusia County are over 65. With nearly 600,000 residents, that's over 150,000 people. One of the complaints we often hear from our readers is that they don't want to go online, because we sometimes make the mistake of pointing out, we're sorry you didn't get your paper, but the information is online. That doesn't make them very happy. They want to hold a printed newspaper so it feels real to them. While they may have a cellphone with internet access even, have you ever tried to read a public notice on a cellphone? Besides, the elderly, people in general look to local newspapers for information involving their local government. A Mason Dixon polling research statewide survey conducted over the past several years, the latest was 2020, the poll results show nearly eight out of 10 Floridians say state and local government should be required to publish public notices in the newspaper on a regular basis. 61% say they were unlikely to seek, seek them out on a government website. If the notices are taken out of newspapers, expect calls and complaints from citizens who may have not, who may have missed a notice that affects them, for example, increased taxes, increased pay for county councilmen, or let's pick on somebody that's not here. If Councilman Robbins wanted to set up a python, python refuge outside of Edgewater, needed a rezoning for that, they wouldn't be very happy. That's the kind of information they just got to have. So, we'll, we hope we'll consider the loss of transparency to residents, and even the appearance of a conflict of interest by government providing a notice of its own activities as opposed to a third party. As far as the notices, it will be confusing to figure out which notices can use the county website. Some notices can be placed on the site if allowed in the statute. If not, they must still be printed, even with notices of the same category. Some may be placed online, but others must still be printed. And I couldn't even follow that when I was saying it, so it really scares me when you start trying to figure out what you need to put online. So for these reasons, we would hope that y'all would consider not going in this direction.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
John Dunbar.
Good evening. I'm John Dunbar. I'm the executive editor of the Daytona Beach News Journal. I'm from Ormond, but I'm not here for the fuel terminal issue. That was quite a crowd we had here. As you know, last year, the legislature passed House Bill 7049, and that went into effect January 1, and the law does give the counties the option to place public notices solely on their own government website and not in local newspapers. I speak to you today over concern such a change would make government decisions less transparent and make it harder and more confusing for the public to know what information is posted where, and to be informed about what local governments are planning. The visibility of these notices is of major importance to the readers of the News Journal, not to mention other local publications. I'll be frank with you on one item. This move would hurt us financially, cost us, it would cost us revenue that would otherwise be used to invest in our coverage of Volusia County. And I second everything that I've heard from everyone before me that this does set up a competitor of sorts that's, that is financed by government money. But there's, there's a threat to the public interest as well as, is outlined by a letter that I got from a guy named Jerry Valsick. Jerry writes, "A backdrop to this event is certainly the important role the News Journal played in informing us countywide about the proposed contentious fuel tank farm matter. We learned of the proposed construction," we did, the News Journal, "of the proposed construction of the massive fuel terminal via a legal ad in the local Hometown News." And then we proceeded to write a story about it, and everybody went nuts. And Mr. Valsick goes on to say, "This attempt is still another example of minimizing and even eliminating transparency of issues impacting our lives in this state. Reducing and eliminating transparency is inconsistent with our democracy." Public notices, as you all know, cover a wide range of topics, such as development proposals, proposed property tax increases, new proposed laws, upcoming budget and tax rate hearings, rezoning proposals, pending permits, proposed law changes, and notices of meetings between public officials, such as county council meetings, among many, many other things. According to Jim Fogler, "Making ads government website only will only push government actions further into the shadows and make them less transparent, and it will make it harder for Floridians to monitor their local government and hold their leaders accountable." Under the current process, the notices, notices are placed on the News Journal's website and are uploaded to searchable, the Florida Press Association's searchable website that aggregates all Florida government notices.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Three minutes goes by fast. I know. I'm, I'm sorry. Councilman Johansson.
Yeah, I have a, we got a motion.
We have a motion in a second to approve.
You know, I brought this up as, as a, as a thought about more efficient and effective government, and, and, you know, I've heard some great comments tonight that, that make me ponder, but a few things. I think it's Mr. Vogler that said, isn't... I'm, I'm not opposed to newspapers continuing to do this. I'm trying to save the government some money here. So if the newspapers can do this at a, at a rate that saves us money, then, then we won't compete. As a matter of fact, one or two newspapers might be able to bid on this and, and do it for us. I'm not opposed to that either, number one. Number two, if, if we do bring it in-house, the, the, the notices that we can, there is nothing preventing the newspapers, other than cost, to provide that information or a link to it on their, on their, in their newspapers and on their website. If you go to our, our website right now and go to Growth Management and go to, what is it, Apollo GRM? It's an interactive map that, that gives you so much more information than the, than the stinking legal document that you get in the newspaper anyhow. What does it say on the bottom of every legal, at least, development and zoning change for this, for more information call? It doesn't say call the newspaper. It says, call Clay Irvin or somebody on the staff. So why not house all this information in one place? Is, is my, is my operational answer. I'm not trying to hide, in, in my opinion, I don't think we're trying to hide information. Also, we talked a little bit about transparency and democracy. We have an obligation to give this information to the newspapers to print. So if, if we're trying to hide something, I guess we could be doing that now, by not providing it to y'all, but by statute, we have to, so, so we do. I think what, what our attorney was talking about, about decreasing the time is, instead of getting it ready seven to 10 days in advance so we can send it to the newspaper, so we don't make the cutoff, so we make the cutoff time so it can appear on Wednesday, two weeks before, we have a little more time to get that up on the website. Does that cut our time down? Maybe a little bit, but I, I think that works. Also, I, I know change is hard, but I believe that, that our public with, with a robust pen, and I've talked to the county manager about this before too, the whole process of, of legal, especially on things like, like zoning changes and development, I, I just think it's, it's old and nasty. When I used to ride my horse to work, it was easy to see the public notice signs in yellow, because I was only going two miles an hour. I could read the whole paragraph before I passed. Now, when you pass those signs, you, you go, whoa, I wonder what that is, and you never get an opportunity. We could go to QR codes. It could link to the, the county website. You could go to this GRM site and see everything you need to see. I think we're becoming more transparent, or at least, that is the intent of why I want to do this. What I don't want to do, and we just had, we just had a conversation about funding for profits. I don't want people that live in this county to lose their jobs so we can save money without knowing that impact. And you guys bring up a, a great point today that, that I didn't consider. So those are things I'm thinking about right now, but I, but I like this idea too. So, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I, I'm going to tell you, I just, my, my gut on this one just says, I'm not comfortable with it. I, I want to save the money. I'm just not sure that we will. I think, though, that what I heard from, is Apollo still down there? Is that all this is going to come back, and we get a second bite at the apple, because right now, we don't know how much we'll save. We, we're, you know, haven't got procurements yet. My, my biggest hurdle, the biggest pain in my gut, is that I see this as replacing, government replacing private business for a service that they're already providing, and then we're going to compete with them. I want to remind the people that are in this room that that did not come from the staff over there. They didn't drum this up. They're not trying to expand government. We are. We asked for this to create a, a different section of service in the county in order to save money. The intent is good. I just don't know if it'll, if it'll be successful. My other issue is that some, several people have brought up the fuel distribution thing. That went in the newspaper. It was a miserable failure, when you talk about transparency, because the newspapers didn't get delivered. It was still all legal, but the newspapers didn't get delivered according to the public, and so they never heard about it, and that made us look bad as far as transparency goes. Now, if it all goes on the county website, are we going to get accused of the same thing? You better believe it. We'll still get accused that we're not being transparent. So I'm, I'm not sure it's going to help us with that, but, you know, I've had letters for and against this. I guess everybody up here has. The letters for, for was that in a newspaper, there's not maps, but all of you just said you also put this on your website. If we provide a map, pardon me?
They are required to by law to put it on their website, and I believe they're also required for, to also put it on the state repository for the website.
Okay. The, and then the letters, the letters against making the change are people that tend to be my age and older, maybe a little younger than me, that are just, that love to sit with the newspaper, and that's how they start today. I honestly think we need to do both, that we need to put it on a web, county webpage for more transparency and in the newspapers. But that's not going to save us any money. That'll cost us more money, I presume. So I'm, I'm just letting you know, I'm struggling with it. I'll probably vote for it as long as it's coming back, and we get to say, yeah, this is good, or no, it's not.
Yes, you, you can put the brakes on it whenever, because we do have to come back with an ordinance to change all of our regulations. Our recommendation is to not have it completely in-house, to use a third-party service provider, like Column, like I think Civic Plus does it, and I think even Gannett also offers those services. So that's, those are three that I know of that does these. And also, we have to come back to you for basically approval of the entire system, which includes any, any fees charged. So that will entail, you know, surveying and coordinating with any participating municipalities. How many notices are they actually? How many notices are they actually publishing? What would the cost be if they stopped publishing in the newspaper? You know, we can get that information from surveying those municipalities, including the clerk, tax collector, sheriff's office, you know, all the local governments that could potentially be affected by this. Right now, we did the survey just on the county departments and the county divisions on what the cost as a county would be. That took a while, this would be a longer kind of more thorough survey.
Okay. So again, I'll just end with that, thank you for all of that, makes me feel a little bit better. I'm not sure it'll save us money, my biggest problem, my biggest issue is, is are we replacing a private business with a new service that government's gonna do instead of private business? The other side of that is, it's not this council's job to keep newspapers in business. I don't think that's, you know, the argument that they're making is, that's not their argument, but it's, you know, we have to, we have to consider that. So anyway, go to Matt Reinhardt.
I think he's gonna yield to me, because I, it's important, Jake's had his, his horse parked more than two hours. He might get a ticket from county parking, he might have to move his horse. Mr. Chairman, thank you, uh, thank you, Matt, for, for yielding. You know, it, it's time to modernize, it's not, I got nothing against the papers, but it's time to modernize. And, and I realize that it doesn't comply with everyone that, that needs that hard paper, but where is it shifting towards, right? It, it's shifting more to, to people using the electronic features with computers, tablets, or phones. And, and the legislature is giving us that, that ability to do it now. It's gonna be a cost savings to the taxpayers, and, you know, like you said, Mr. Chairman, and I don't know if the paper was delivered or not on the hometown news, I, I know evidence either way. But if we did have our website, then we know for sure that our staff did post it up there, and everybody that was, that was monitoring or wanted to monitor can see the, the publication for the, for the fuel farm, right? It'll be a transition thing, and, and maybe, I would be supportive of, when it comes down to, maybe a hybrid transition period of time. I'll, I'll throw that out there, right? Because people will have to get accustomed to it. But I think the ultimate goal would be to more modernize, and, and, you know, maybe there's a timeframe where we have both running at the same time, and then eventually one drops off, so I'm open to that, but I think it's time to modernize. Thank you, Ms. Chair, thank you, Matt.
Councilman Reinhardt.
Thank you, Chair. So when I first saw this, I'll admit, I thought, you know, who reads the newspaper anymore? I do. You know, and you brought up a valid point, you ever tried to read the, you know, either the classified or whatever? I immediately grabbed my phone and I'm like, you know, he's right, it's hard to see. A while back, we had a discussion when the fuel farm was talking about pros and cons and making a list, and I started doing that. And of course, if this comes back to us, we're given the opportunity to do a little bit more. But I am that tangible guy, I like a newspaper. You know, my, I told my wife when I got elected that I wanted that newspaper to stay current on the, I, I used to get it and I don't anymore, but I want to stay current with affairs and whatnot. And she knew I was that old-fashioned guy that liked to open up the paper. No, I didn't want to walk out in the rain to go get it, but, you know, that's how she sold it to me to go online. I'm still not happy, but anyways, that being said, I, I do get your point about the conflict of interests. I do get the point about government replacing private business. I do get the point, competing, government competing with private. I get all that, but I also get your side, you know, going modern, I, I do. So I'm completely torn from somebody that was 100% thinking that people can go to the internet, go to the phone and look at something online easier than necessarily if they don't get the paper, because not everybody does get, you know, not everybody does. But also, the, the mere fact that this will come back to us when we get those numbers, when we see what they do, I would like to see how, that being said, if we are gonna come back, I really would like to see where those other counties that you referred to, that's why I asked the question, what's their benefit? Is there a benefit? You know, I'm leaning more towards keeping it in the paper, but, you know, I, I'd like to know that information as well, so.
And, and, you know, about the, with, with the county.
No, and I'm not saying it is, I'm just saying I understand their point, I'm not saying that it is, so.
Well, the only thing is, is the county, you know, for, for example, land use items, we have heightened notice requirements that it's not just publication in the paper. We can just stick with that bare minimum. However, we also require mail notices, you know, it's told, told us to do that. We put that in an, in an ordinance, if we fail a mail notice, I'm the one who says, do it again, you know, delay, delay the item because we need to inform the public. We also put the postings on there, that's a county local requirement, no one told us we had to do that. Someone fails to put a posting, delay the item, we need to have proper notice. Because to us attorneys, notice is important because it's jurisdictional, it allows you to act. It allows the item to go forward and meet all the requirements. So that's, so notice is important to us both for transparency sakes, but for also for, you know, just legal jurisdiction.
I get it, I get it, like I said, I wasn't, wasn't saying it was, I just get what they're, how somebody could, could veer it that way, that's all I'm saying, so. Thank you, Chair.
Councilman Kent.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm gonna start out my comments with thanking the individuals that filled out a card and spoke today. We recently had a situation at our last meeting where there was an ask from another government agency, and they sent people in that they couldn't answer basic questions about their budget. I love that you sent the CEO, the COO, the managing editors. Your people are here because it's important to you, it's important to your readers, and I just want to say thank you. Thank you for not pushing this off on someone else, you showed up, thanks for showing up. Council members, I knew that I became an adult when I started receiving and reading the newspaper at 24 years old. I was, I had a conversation with myself, am I seriously reading this thing from front to back? And I'm enjoying it, and it's interesting, and it's a real true story. And I kept getting that local Daytona Beach News Journal for almost 20 years. My parents received it between 40 and 50 years. And quite frankly, they just, you know, I talked about it earlier, you know, inflation was 9.06%, everybody's gotta cut, and my parents had to cut, and that's one of the things they cut out of their everyday life. But I still got the paper, and I made a, a point every day to bring it to them, they got to read it, my paper every day. But I'll just tell you, my mom thought there was gonna be a story about her baby boy in the paper yesterday, which the story hasn't hit yet, I hear it's going to, but, but they said, my mom said to me yesterday, she said, "I sent your father out for a paper, do you know how much a newspaper costs? And it's not even a Sunday paper," she said, "your father spent $3.70 at, I don't know if it was a CVS or Walgreens or a Sunoco, I don't know." But my mother was just absolutely floored. And that's, that's the harsh reality of, of what's going on here. And for those old timers, you know, they look at the paper now, and I'm not picking on any one particular, but they're paying more and the paper's less, it's not, it's not what it used to be for them, and that's hard. But my question, Paulo, is for, for you, for staff. So you mentioned that if we go this route, we, we very well could farm this out to a different company, but it, it could happen in-house, right? I mean, I mean, here I'm thinking, right now, today, we have staff members that create these notices, correct? And then send them to the paper?
It's, yes, yes, so we, we mock up the notice, we send the notice usually to, it's, we work with the news journal. We provide them a, usually an ordinance, and there's proofreading and it gets public, it gets published.
But we're doing that work, we, I mean, they, we have to, it's part of our job, we have to do that. So my question is, why would we do that, all of that work, and then send it out? I mean, and George, correct me, maybe we don't have the personnel, but if we're talking about saving money, why would we just not do it on our own website?
It's not a, well, I'm gonna disagree, it's not a passive repository. It is, the, the website needs to be searchable, it needs to provide affidavits, it needs to, you need to have a registration system for persons to interact with it, to request first-class mail.
So we're not there yet, we're not there.
Yes, I would defer to Ryan because he's under IT, he kinda knows the, you know, what our capabilities are.
Absolutely.
Ryan Olsowski, Chief Financial Officer. On behalf of IT, this would be akin to any other software thing where we'd be going out and looking for a piece of software to help manage this. Except they do go a little bit further, they are producing the website, they could even send out the mailings, I, I believe. The, the additional factor here is it's not just our website, you're setting up a system where any government that wants to participate can also log in, manage their own notices, make sure their notices are going out to their people. So it's more than just posting to our website.
Yeah, you know, times are changing, and change is not always easy, I'm aware of that. I gotta tell you, I, I don't know where I am on this, I'm gonna vote to, so we have this come back to us? But I'm not 100% sold either, either way. I think all of the emails I received, some of those names you mentioned, you know, I'm just gonna say, some of those are Ormond Beach residents, but I received emails from them, and, you know, they're like, this is, this is important to us, this is where we get our information. And I know a big part of that is, that's what they're used to. That's, that's, you know, when you're, when you're used to having honey bunches of votes every morning, and then someone tries to slip in Honey Nut Cheerios, you know, it's just, it's not the same. So I'm not, I'm not exactly sure where I'm gonna land on this.
Jake Johansson.
Yeah, Paulo, I know we don't interact with the public, so can you get back to me with the cost of a, the size of a legal ad versus the same cost for a different kind of ad, see if it's the same cost, I, I don't know.
And you have a lot of experts who actually deal with the publication in their newspapers, so if I misspeak, anyone?
I'm sure they'll say something.
So there, there's two different types of ads essentially that we interact with. You have legal, legal notices ad that goes into the legal classified section. Those, I think we costed out approximately $3.50 per line, I think there's a statutory thing, but it's approximately $350 per ad for a normal advertisement. Then we deal with what are called display ads, those display ads are not supposed to be published in the legal notices section. Those are published in the rest of the newspaper, those are more expensive. I believe we were quoted, let me see, $28.75 per column inch and $24.04 for subsequent insertions. Those are the more expensive advertisements, you know, they can come with maps, they're, they're, sometimes they're full-page ads, like the budget or trim notices. So those vary in size by a lot, $1,000 to $8,000, because they're, the display ads usually cost.
Sure.
So it, it depends upon the size and where it's located.
It depends, all right, thanks.
Okay, looks like that's the end of, of the debate, end of public comments. We have a, a motion on the floor to approve this, to come back for a second reading, basically. And motion by Councilman Santiago, seconded by Jake Johansson. As you can tell from all the comments you've heard, we're, there, this is not an easy sell, there's nobody that's, I guess we're gonna, we're gonna hear that. In the vote, I think we all need to have it come back and see more detail on it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Brower, I did just want to point out that the motion was by Mr. Johansson and seconded by Mr. Santiago. Set it first.
That's what I wrote down, is that not what I said? Okay, I'm dyslexic. Okay, thank you for waiting all night for that. The last item of the evening, item seven, fiscal year 2022-23 revised budget year and fund reconciliation and appropriation. You're still here.
I am. Good evening, Councilor Aaron Van Cleek, Deputy Finance Director. The item before you seeks council approval to transfer money between funds, because we have to have council's authority for that. Most of it is federal state appropriations for hurricane relief, and also grant funding being returned to the originating source if it was a match. It is explained in the body of the agenda, and if you have any questions, we're here to answer them for you.
Councilman Santiago.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve transfers.
Second.
Motion to approve a transfer by David, transfers by David Santiago, second by, Matt, was that you? By Councilman Reinhardt. Any questions, David Santiago?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, Jake.
Jake Johansson.
Quickly, Aaron, this trues us up for good, or?
Yes, sir, for 2223, this is our last meeting that we can revise the budget.
Last one, yeah, thank you.
Any other comments, debate? Let's see, I've gotta wait till. We got four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero, barely.
Can I make a motion to put an exclamation point on, motion on that?
No, you can't.
Make sure staff transfers, does the transfers.
No, you can't. Okay, do we have any final public participation? He has John sick? He didn't, he didn't send a note? Okay, then we will go to the county managers' report.
Yes, Chair, thank you. First off, I was just going to talk a little bit, we, we were talking about websites. We've opened a new site called Sand Projects that'll be highlighting what we're doing out on the beach. We'll also tomorrow be sending out easement requests by certified mail. Very important that we get those easements, and I just wanted to thank the town of Ponte Inlet for their help with this, and they did give us a letter of support that will go out to the residents to help move that along, so it's important. Second item, you had asked about the second meeting in December. We will be building the agenda tomorrow for the first meeting in September. And I can say already from what's out there, you have about somewhere around 19 numbered items, and you're, you're at Z with the, the other items now, the consent items. We could, I, I was just looking at it, there's a few items that I could move around or maybe move out, so I don't wanna scare you. And, and because the moratorium item will actually be in January, it, it is possible, if you want to have a long meeting, on that first meeting, that we could do that and not have the second. You would also, but I'm, I'm sure it would be short and sweet, I have to do my evaluation along with mics at that first meeting when normally it would be at the second, but again, we, we can make that happen if that's the desire of the council. And the, what's the two main items? Oh, the, the third.
Chairman, can we, can we touch on that first one about the December meeting? Can we just briefly decide now what, what we want to do, Chairman? Do you mind if we just give a?
I don't.
You don't mind? I'm okay with one super-long meeting, I say super-long, you're gonna move some things around, I heard.
Yeah, we, we don't want to be, you know, two days, but we'll try to knock that down.
Yeah, and we can, and we can do both your evaluations at that meeting.
Yep.
Yep, we just gotta get your evaluation to you expeditiously.
Right, and I, and I understand mine came later, and I apologize, I.
You had some things going on, it's okay.
So, but, yeah, you guys now should have everything, the form if you choose to use that, and.
You five gentlemen that are here, let me ask you, are you, are you okay with one meeting in December?
I am.
I'll make a motion, Chairman.
The meeting starts at eight.
That's okay.
Starts at nine.
Starts at nine.
So.
Yeah, starts at nine.
If the meeting goes long, then their evaluation should reflect poorly on that. But it's actually not their fault if the meeting goes long.
I'll get the scissors out immediately, we'll be chopping that.
I, I just assumed our evaluations would be the first item of business.
I just assumed our evaluations would be the first item of business.
Last item, probably. I'll make a motion to nix or get rid of the second meeting in December. We just have the one meeting.
Any comment, debate? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One meeting in December.
Mr. Chairman, I thought the evaluation stuff was gonna come out of the CST fund that we no longer have.
Good exclamation point. The other item I had, the first meeting in January, of course, remember that's always a Thursday. Because everyone, there's no changeover or anything, so there's not much of a pomp and circumstance like there can be, we thought it might be a good time to do the re-up of the goals. I sent out the goals worksheet that we're at today. I think if you take a look at that, maybe give me some feedback. But what I'd like to do is bring back the same facilitator, and he is available. He would probably like to take some time to interview you like he did last time, but if I, if his council is okay with that, I can set that up and get moving on that as well.
The first meeting in January on a Thursday.
Yep. Works for me, Chairman.
I think that'd be a great way to start our year with goals and really zero in on them, so, yeah.
It's exactly what I was hoping to hear from you, manager.
Thank you.
Okay, unanimous. That's it? You're done? Okay. Mike Dyer, County Attorney.
Yes, sir. First, I just wanna say it's great to have Kevin Captain here.
Who's that?
Yeah. Kinda thought it was old times there for a second. Yeah, I know, I send you, try to keep you as posted as possible on litigation updates. But two, I just wanted to highlight that I sent to you recently. The first is the West Wusha Hospital Authority case. So we did discover since our last meeting that the West Wusha Hospital Authority has decided to pay for year two of their contributions. They recently had paid for year one, and, which I think is, was pending in litigation. Do I have that right, Kevin? If you could just give a quick update where we are.
They've paid for year one, they've paid for year two, and now they're paying current. So we're still going to have the hearing on the issue about whether or not they have to pay pursuant to the statute, but they are paid to date.
Okay, so Kevin and his team will be in trial. They've scheduled it for early January on whether or not they're required to pay. We'll defend, do our best to defend against that. I thought that was good progress to get some payments in to avoid, not all the dispute, but some of the dispute at least. And lastly, in the challenge to your short-term rental ordinance brought by Mr. Vega, and that's one of the two cases that have been pending, they, Judge, Mr. Vega sought to disqualify Judge Weston in three cases he has involving the county. The judge has denied each of those motions to disqualify. Did grant the motion to write a written opinion that the county had prevailed on that and was just a, there was no written opinion to that. So we'll wait for that written ruling, and I'll share it with you as soon as we can. But I thought that was further progress in that case and good news. Lastly, I did just thought it'd be appropriate to address Friday afternoon, I've learned not many good things happen on Friday afternoon. That seems to be the pattern. And so Friday afternoon, I got a copy of a press release, which I know was shared with y'all, from the Chief Financial Officer of the school district, Todd Seis. I think I'm pronouncing that correctly. And I was surprised by it. Number one, that it came from him, who was not at your council meeting when they made the funding request for school resource deputies, by the way. Neither was any other member of his office, neither was the superintendent, anyone that seemed to be able to answer financial questions that you had. But in this press release, he criticized this council, said that the county, quote, "The actions and attitudes of the council reflect a concerning lack of respect and understanding of our shared responsibilities in ensuring children's safety in the county. As a CFO of Volusia County Schools, I advocate for a collaborative and professional approach to addressing these critical issues." Well, with all due respect, everything in this press release goes against what he just said. It's not collaborative, and it was not professional. I have had conversations, go to lunch with their attorney, Kevin Penley, I have, you can call me at any time, but when you read this press release, you read that there appears to be anger that the funding request was not granted by this council. He goes further criticizing one of your members, which he can, I'm sure we'll address, but criticizing me. He alleges that, you did not have a copy of the statute that they were relying on. Well, that's not true. You did. It was emailed to you. But he says, when I was asked, "Is the school district financially responsible for paying law enforcement officers?" And I said, "Well, they are." He says, "Well, that's a partially true statement." He left out that there can be a voluntary arrangement between the law enforcement agency and the school district. Well, that is why they were here. They were asking for the money. So there is nothing in the statute that mandates you to have granted that funding request. That's a policy decision. But I have, it is my understanding, the sheriff's office and school district entered into an agreement for this school year to fund school resource deputies. It was signed in June, and the sheriff's office, and I think he, this was stated during the presentation, agreed to allocate seven deputies. And there was a funding split between the school district and the sheriff's office. And that agreement was subject to appropriation by you, the way the agreement's written, which you did. You approved the budget. This only came up because they sought to enhance the number of deputies after the budget year started. So I am, first of all, you will not find somebody more dedicated to having a collaborative approach with our local government partners. That's been a big thing, it's been important with me, and I continue to live and support because we're all in the same boat most of the time. But this press release by Mr. Seis was detrimental to the relationship. It was unnecessary, and the next time you're upset, I would say, Mr. Seis, you or your attorney, pick up the phone, because there is nothing in the statute that, you said you're asking out for an opinion from the Florida Attorney General's Office to, quote, "resolve this conflict," end quote. I don't know what conflict he's talking about. There's nothing in the statute that gives a school district a blank check of any law enforcement agency, or a county, or a city, to fund money in the middle of their budget year, mind you, deputies, and you made the comment at the last meeting about, well, maybe that's why you have reserves to fund that in the middle of the school year, too, you can get to the end of that school year. So I was very disappointed in the press release. I hope we can move on from it. I anticipate we will. What we do and the missions we serve are too important. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to respond?
Would it be appropriate with the council if I responded right now with that vein? Counsel, would you mind?
Why don't we let him go first, and he can respond at the same time?
Are you ready to do?
I'm ready for everything. Yeah, if you, Counsel, you don't mind, thank you very much. Mr. Dyer, thank you for your professionalism and your comments on that. So Counsel, I'll just say to the school board, they sent out that press release last Friday from their CFO, Todd Seis, who, by the way, was absent from the November 7th county council meeting. So I'll just say, school board, what I learned was, if you don't give the school district the money they demand, then they resort to name-calling. They singled out the county attorney and myself, but they really attacked this entire council, because we voted seven to zero. It was unanimous. My opinion, not a smart move by the school district to do that. Now, the superintendent, who I can only assume approved this wildly inappropriate press release from CFO Todd Seis, and if she didn't, I guess that would be more questions I would have, you know, how are your cabinet members sending out press releases without you knowing about it? That's another whole discussion. But let's remember how this got started. The school district came to us at the 13th hour with their hat in hand and a very poor presentation, riddled with mistakes, many errors, asking for our tax dollars, when you're sitting on nearly $27 million in unassigned fund balance. Oh, yeah, and the deputy superintendent, and I believe the acting COO, couldn't even answer basic budgetary questions about their fund balance. Do better, school district. Stop acting like a bully and stop the name-calling. Counsel, I wanna read to you very quickly, because the Ormond Observer did a story, I suspect the news journal will do a story, but the Observer didn't write my whole comments that I sent them on Friday late afternoon, but this is what I wrote. Response from Volusia County Councilman Troy Kent, District 4, to the letter by CFO Todd Seis, Volusia County Schools. I live by the sentiment that actions speak louder than words. The Volusia County School District Chief Financial Officer Todd Seis talks about how important school safety is to him, yet he nor Superintendent Baugaben were in attendance at the November 7th county council meeting. What was more important than the safety of children? Well, Mr. Seis was attending a conference, one that he says he attends twice a year. Having Mr. Seis or Superintendent Baugaben present at this meeting would have allowed them both the opportunity to answer basic budgetary questions. Unfortunately, the staff the superintendent sent clearly could not. If there are any questions to what was stated, I urge you to go to volusia.org to the county council meeting dated November 7th, item number four, and watch for yourself. To clarify, you will see that I asked the school district to use their unassigned general fund reserves and not mix the FEFP funds, as Mr. Seis has claimed I did. As the District 4 representative, I have high expectations when anyone comes before this council asking for your hard-earned tax dollars. I was disappointed for the school district when I watched their presentation that was riddled with mistakes that the school district and Chief Financial Officer Todd Seis created. At our last council meeting, we had a ham-handed, badly-presented request for over $340,000 Volusia County taxpayer dollars. This request arrived a month after our budget was adopted. I stand by my vote to deny this request, which was not well-received by anyone else who sits on the dais with me. We all want safe schools, just as we all want safe streets and safe neighborhoods. The question is, whose duty is it to pay for this safety? In the case of schools, if the state legislature wanted county government to pay for a certain percentage of school security costs, it very easily could have decided as much. I hope anyone who reads the statute cited in this statement understands the differences in definition of the words "may" and "shall," because Chief Financial Officer Todd Seis clearly does not. In the meantime, I will continue to rely on the wisdom of the county attorney, our sheriff, and my colleagues, each of whom shared the concerns I had when we voted unanimously seven-zero to deny this request. I wanna just briefly, just two other quick things. We received an email update from Dr. Burbaw about Lake Helen and their issue with their Echo grant, and I just wanted to say, we all received that memo from staff with the results of the August compliance visit to the city of Lake Helen's Echo Project, the Creative Arts Cafe, that this council put on a 12-month probation back in June. Lake Helen is not on track to come into compliance by the end of the probationary period. The city has successfully implemented other Echo projects, but I think it's time for them to realize they're not able to deliver what was promised in the 2004 scope of services for this Echo project. This council has cooperated with the city in 2017 and again in 2023 to support a revised scope of services to help them be successful, but they've not been able to deliver. I hope that the newly-elected council in Lake Helen will do the right thing and vote to reimburse the $156,000 of the county investment for this Echo project, so they can have a fresh start, make the facility what the community wants and needs. And then my last thing is I just wanted to wish each and every one of you a wonderful Thanksgiving. Enjoy your family, enjoy the food, and, you know, something I've noticed about this council is that, and I said it when we first sat up here together and got sworn in, we're not always going to agree on things, and that's healthy. But the core things that we've been talking about, I almost said preaching, but we've been, each of us have talked about, we have been in lockstep lately. We have not been giving wish-wash answers. The community is learning where we stand, and we have some things that we very much agree upon, and we have some things that some of us think differently about, and they're both healthy. And I just wanted to say, I think we are a really positive, powerful force, and we're making, even though it might seem small, big impacts with tax relief and not mixed messages and help where we think it's the biggest bang for the buck. And I'm proud to serve with each of you. Have a great Thanksgiving.
Councilman Santiago.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Thank you.
Councilman Johansson.
I'll take that time. Chairman, I'm concerned about one of our procedures. You know, I've been doing this local government thing for about eight or nine years now, and one of the things I do is wait till November, my birthday month, to do everything that I owe, my physical, my ethics training, and anything else that comes up yearly. And so I did my ethics training, and it's kinda like safety. Every year, it brings you back up to speed on things important. One of the things that we do here on this dais that I think we probably need to check on is, we don't take breaks, so we all take our comfort breaks and leave the area here. And once we call the roll and we're here, we're here, so I think we all need to vote on every item, so when we disappear to go in the back to use the restroom or grab a water, and we vote, we don't get a full vote. So I wanna make sure that if there's seven people here, we get seven people voting on every issue in accordance with how the rules and how ethics and how the law was written. I think the only way we can get out of a vote is if we're not present, Danny, or if we have to, if we have a conflict interest. So Chairman, I'd like to, just when people walk back in, I think the easiest thing to do is say, you know, "What say you on that last item?" And just get it recorded, so in our minutes, we can have whatever the number is, 7061 vote, instead of just walking out and missing the vote.
I agree, and I'm a yes on that with the information from our CFO. Yes for Kent.
Exclamation point.
Yeah, and I think just for-
I think just for, you know, I have not seen it happen during a quasi judicial item, so I would encourage you not to get up during a quasi judicial item because if you step out and you didn't hear everything, they can question the vote. I think I saw Mr. Kent do it, reflected his vote when he walked right back in. I think you could do that, or just build in, maybe take five-minute breaks every now and then.
Whatever.
And you don't have that issue.
Yeah, that's up to you. I just want all votes counted on the issues. And that was because I did my ethics, and they said there was a bunch of questions asked, and that was one of them. I heard, or I went to the Central Florida Regional Planning Council, and we did a few things that I want to bring to everybody's attention. The Eastern and Central Florida, the Central Florida Regional Planning Council briefed a study to identify areas of existing and potential development activity for clay and, sorry. I don't know if you've seen their study and their map on the, basically on biodiversity and opportunity areas, but it's a great tool. I figured you saw it, but I saw it and it was pretty interesting. And for George and Suzanne and all the people on the staff, the Diamond Awards are February 21st somewhere, me and Danny, well, I'll be there, I don't know if Danny will be there, but East Central Florida Diamond Awards are February 21st. Gosh, I think they're in Seminole or maybe Lake Mary, but I'll let you know, but somebody will be there. I've received a lot of emails, complaints about flooding. I think we probably all have, depending on what area. I know Mr. Robinson and I received a lot for his district in the vicinity of Timoca Farms Road for me. And Ben, since you're here, if I can bother you to maybe explain, we talked about this, explain some of the reasons for why it's flooding, what's going on, what happened after Hurricane Ian, why everybody's lawn is filled with water this week and it hasn't happened for the past 15 years?
Sure, Ben Bartlett, Public Works Director. So, you know, this past week we've had a fair amount of rain. We had a little bit of a tropical system that dropped upwards of eight to 11 inches of rain in the area. Combined with the wind direction, caused extreme tidal conditions. Essentially, in this county, we kind of have three conditions. We have closed basins, you see that more on the west side, you know, basically a bowl. You live in a bowl, the water, it rains, the water fills up, it has nowhere to go. You can mitigate for that, like DeBarry has with a series of pump stations, Deltona struggles with that, we have some areas in Deland as well. And then the other two conditions, you either drain to the St. John's River or you drain to something that's tidally influenced on the east side of the county. So when the tides are up, essentially you have, instead of having a positive outfall where water can drain out when we get a lot of rain, you essentially end up in that closed basin system because the water can't drain. And so we've seen that in extreme circumstances during Hurricane Ian. We had extreme tidal situations combined with, you know, double 100-year storm event, 20-plus inches of rain. You know, we had an event a month or so ago in Ormond where we got six or seven inches of rain in like two hours, which is a lot of rain. That high intensity of a rain can cause flooding, and then this past week we've got quite a bit of rain, and so that, when the water can't drain out, it fills up, and people will see that yard flooding and the roadway flooding. And if you're in a low-lying area, if you're on the east side of the county and you're in an area that's probably below 10 feet of sea level, you're going to see flooding in those types of situations.
Got it. Thank you very much, Ben. Lastly, thanks. So lastly, counsel, I did something today that I hope never to do again, and I want you to know why. I made a motion during the field farm discussion to take action on something that wasn't on the agenda, and it really bothers me that I did that because I'm dead-set against that. There may be pro-I2 people out there that did not have an opportunity to come up to the podium and state their case before we voted that vote. I think the vote was the right decision. I don't want to make it a habit, and I want you to know it bothers me. So, and lastly, not only Thanksgiving, but, you know, I'm not keen on doing proclamations on the spot, so I'm not going to declare today my dire day, but I will wish you, sir, belated, happy 50th birthday.
Thank you.
That's all, sir. Councilman Reinhardt.
Thank you, Chair. Nothing, a whole lot. Kevin, it's awesome seeing you here. No offense, but it was real nice seeing Kevin again, so first off. That is you, right? Secondly, and lastly, with respect to the upcoming holiday, it's been a season for our family, you know, with, this will be the first year without my mom, but we got my father-in-law back yesterday, so it should be a good one. I wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving and a safe one as well. That's all. Thank you.
Wow, thank you. I just have a couple of quick orders of business. The first one is to say, Ben, I hope you enjoyed your birthday.
He's been working out, I can tell. July 13th, right? Happy birthday.
Like I tell you, you missed mine. But the office staff did not. Yes, thank you. Yeah. Couple of quick things that I need to do. We, my appointment to the Volusia Forever Board resigned, so I need to replace that person, and so I'd like to nominate Kelly Frasca, who has the time to serve on that. She's a former Lake Helen city councilwoman, she's already turned in her, all the required paperwork that has come back, so.
I'll second that.
Second for Kelly Frasca.
Do we have her paperwork?
Yes.
Correct, I do. She currently serves on the Animal Control Advisory Board, but they are allowed to serve on two boards, and it's not a dual office holding board.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Kelly Frasca is nominated. Then another similar one on the Enrak Board.
Mr. Brower, can you clarify who the second was for the appointment of Kelly Frasca?
David Santiago. The staff has brought to my attention that my appointment to the Enrak Board has missed more meetings than attended, eight of 14, and it's a really hard-working board. I don't think it's fair to the rest of the board, so I would like to replace that person, and my nominee would be Suzanne Shiver to the Enrak Board. Can I get a second for Suzanne?
Mr. Brower, can I bring that to you back at the next council meeting? I don't currently have an application on file for Suzanne, or I'm not certain at this moment if she's passed her clean hands check, or if she does even have an application on file.
I would say she has because she serves on a board for me.
She serves on Volusia Forever.
She is on the Forever Committee. Do we, I think we typically ask them though to submit an individual application, if I'm not mistaken. I think that's what Chris was referring to.
Is it the application or is it the clean hands check you need?
I think it's both. I think the application causes the clean hands, just to make sure nothing else has come in.
Okay.
By board appointment. Understand the council's.
Chairman, I would second it, but it sounds like we got to get some paperwork.
Okay, we will, can you just, we'll bring that back at the next. Do you have a microphone?
I'm going to clarify that that motion is to remove Elias Tobias from Enrak and to appoint Suzanne Shiver, potentially bring her back at the next council meeting.
Right. Make that an agenda item for the next council.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, third one is also a request for staff to bring back at the next meeting. It's a request for the possible rename of a beach park that's named after a road, Dahlia Park. It's a relatively new park. It's a nice park. I would like to have this council consider renaming it after local resident Stephen Beaver Massfeller. Stephen was a world-class lifeguard. He was also an international champion surfer from Daytona Beach who surfed our beaches, surfed the big waves of Hawaii where he was severely injured, and went through multiple surgeries, came back and dedicated himself to helping other people that were similarly injured. So staff, if you would bring us back the steps that we would need to take to rename Dahlia Park and any associated cost with that, the council needs to know that so they can rightly consider it. Yes?
I don't know who the individual is. I don't know if it warrants merit or not. I'm sure that the research you've done certainly think it warrants it, but I would prefer, I don't know what the process is for naming facilities. I would prefer for the process to come before us and then the council decide if maybe others want to throw names, if we have a place that we want to name. Again, I don't have anybody that will substitute. I think to me it's more process.
That's what I'm asking for, the process for them to bring it back, what we would have to do to rename it and any associated cost.
Okay, not for any specific person at this time?
No.
The easiest is just if you're director, bring that back out in the form of an agenda item, and you could, here's the process, and then if you.
Go from there.
If you want to make that name a day. The only rule I'm aware of is more of a unwritten rule, but advice has always been they usually have to be deceased, but other than that, it's been kind of wide open.
He is deceased, as I think you know.
And we'll go ahead and try to figure out the cost, and I do think, because that's a new park, that's an easier one to do than others where it's established in a lot of other, you know, media that we have and brochures and that type of stuff. So this would probably be a good one because it's relatively new.
Okay. I guess what I'm asking is besides bringing back that process and any associated cost, if you would also include the information about Steve Massfeller, because he's got international press as a championship, so that everybody knows who I'm talking about. I don't expect the council to make a decision on somebody that they've never heard of, but he is, he's well-known with at least a certain population percentage of the county, the lifeguards, surfing community, he's well-known around the world for that.
And Chairman?
Yes.
I'll just briefly add to that, a couple of things from what I heard from George as well. I briefly met Beaver, and, you know, when you hear about that story at the pipeline, because he was an incredible surfer from the east coast of Florida, and the horrific accident at Pipeline where I believe he was coded several times and they were able to bring him back to life, the water crew out in Hawaii, and, you know, we'll need background on him, we'll need information. He is deceased, I recently read that. I'm not crazy about the whole, they've got to be deceased. I mean, this is the Frank Bruno complex, you know, I think downstairs. So somebody was able to get something through. You know, I only say that because we named the Andy Romano Beachfront Park after Andy Romano, and he was alive to see that, and it was impactful, and it was well-deserved, and I would just hate for us to not name well-deserved people.
And like I said, it's not a horrific, it was just kind of a.
Yeah, no, and I get the reason behind it, you know, you name it after somebody and then something terrible happens.
Yeah, we named the street Ryan Lochte Way, that didn't work out too well.
Gotcha, yeah, I got you. Nothing says you can't change a name, but, you know, I hear you. So I look forward to getting that information back from staff. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Two more, well, I thought that one was going to be quick. The fourth thing is, we had, nobody knows this, maybe except Jake and I, we had a, I had an uncomfortable moment today when I walked in here. I had been asked to do a proclamation, and when I learned about the person, I said, "Yeah, I'd be glad to do it," the proclamation that happened this morning. But the proclamations, when we do that, are always signed by all the council members in the chair electronically. This one was not, and so I was informed when I got here that, do the proclamation, but this beautiful frame proclamation doesn't have any of our names on it, so if it's approved by the council, and that's the sticking point, this is not a complaint by the, I'm just pointing out what happened, because it was embarrassing for the, or it was puzzling to the family. So I had to tell the family privately down there that we'll, if it's approved, we'll all sign it, and then we'll mail you a copy, and then you got to take this beautiful frame apart and put the signed proclamation back in. I understand the reason that occurred is because if we just do proclamations and it's already signed, and then you approve it, you might not approve of that proclamation. You have that right to not say, "I approve a proclamation for, you know, XYZ." So it's, it's not fair to you, and I understand that, and I'm not complaining about it, but I don't want to, I don't want to put a potential really good family through that again, so I, we, I guess I'm asking staff to come up with another way to do it that we, in fact, Jake said, after we approved it, you should have done that first. And I would have if I'd have known that before I got here today and put the family in that situation. So we either need to approve them first, and we maybe could do it with one-on, in the one-on-ones that you do, would you have any problem with this? Or we have to bring it up to a council meeting, approve it, and then bring it back to present it at the next one.
Mr. Chairman, I'm about six months now. My signature means a lot to me, and I don't allow people to put it on paperwork without my knowledge or my approval, and probably some others feel the same way. And I don't like to be embarrassed in public when I don't need to be. There may be an occasion, we just, we just talked about doing, renaming something to somebody and then kind of having it embarrassing you later. 99% of our proclamations are no-brainers, but there will be one, once, that will think it's a no-brainer, you'll sign it, and then you'll find out he's a convicted felon, he's an embezzler, she's something, and we will regret that we signed it. I would prefer not to assume approval of something unless we approve it. A lot of these proclamations, we're not doing in council chambers anymore, so that problem goes away. We have to approve it before it's presented. I would appreciate, and I think we're working with Mike on this, is to approve them ahead of time and then present them the next time because they've already been approved, and it's just a presentation. If we're doing it here, it's easy. I would hope that's the way we go. That way I'm comfortable that when I see it on an agenda item with my signature on it, it's, I'm one of the seven oh that did it. So that's kind of where I was going with that.
And that's fine, that solves a problem. So Mr. Ryan, I think you'll come back with us with a process to do that, and then, and then we don't put somebody else in that situation. Okay, solved, thank you. Last, last thing I would like to have, George, I was reading through the, what you sent with all of the goals on it, and it's good to do that from time to time. One of the things, one of the goals that I think this council was most excited about was, had to do with making Volusia County an easy place to do business and not have it be, have unnecessary burdens on businesses. There was requirements that a business has to go through. I would like to see. I would like to see, I would probably have to come from Clay's staff, if, there's a lot of permit requirements that we don't have any say on. We have to do them because it's a state requirement, it's a state building code requirement or something like that. I would like for this council to be provided a list of permits that are, that originated with the county council that we could evaluate, get rid of if we don't like it, make it stronger if we think it needs, but just so we know what we're dealing with, that maybe former councils have put on us, so that we can see if there's something like a permit to put pavers in your backyard, that we really want to require that. So is that, is that possible, to get a list of county originating permit requirements?
Yeah. I just need to talk to Clay about what it would take to do that, we bring it back as an agenda item.
Maybe, and I'm not asking for it next meeting, maybe we could have that before our next goal setting.
I think that's reasonable, so yeah, we'll take a look at that.
All right. And that's all I have, other than to join everybody else in saying happy Thanksgiving and happy pie night for my family.
Making pies or eating them tonight?
We're a big family, and there's not enough time on Thanksgiving to make pies, so I said that's, that can't stand. So on Wednesday night before Thanksgiving, we created a new holiday, it's Pie Night. Everybody comes home, boys and girls, all make a pie.
That sounds good.
I make, so then we have, that means we have 11 pies, and I make the stuffing.
Very, very nice.
So consider Pie Night. We're adjourned at 9:37.